Comment live of the phone call. One, six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. And intermediate ID code number three, ten, two, three, three, four, eight, eight, eight. On the date of the meeting, during the portion of the agenda entitled All Communications. There will be two all communication sessions, one for the agendized items and one for non-agendized items. Email, public comments can be emailed to the city clerk at city clerk at Carson dot C A dot gov. Written communications can be placed on the middle, in the metal box located in front of City Hall. Madam City Clerk, could you call the meet, roll call please?
Absolutely. Good evening.
Evening.
Roll call, Councilmember Arlene Bocatia Rojas.
Present.
Councilmember Cedric Hicks.
Present.
Councilmember Jawan Hilton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Jim Dear.
Present.
And Mayor Lula Davis Holmes.
Present.
Thank you.
We'll have a flag salute by our Councilwoman Arlene Bocataz Rojas.
Yes. I'm gonna stand, so salute to the flag, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
The richest stands.
Which stands one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we will have a invocation by my bishop, my pastor, none other than Bishop Sherman Gordon from the Family of Faith Christian Center.
Hello everyone, thank you for having me here to our esteemed mayor, my member, um, our mayor, the wonderful city of Carson, to all the council persons, to all the city officials, to all the city workers. Indeed, this is the day the Lord has made, let us rejoice and be glad in it. Uh, begin this word of prayer by reminding us all of the words found in Psalm one twenty seven verse one. It says, except the Lord builds the house, except the Lord builds the city, all our work is in vain. And so it is my prayer that as we begin this brand new year of agreement and multiplication, um, that your work, our work shall not be in vain. And I declare and decree that everything you put your hands to this year, you shall be productive and prosperous. Father God, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this opportunity to come together once again. We thank you that you brought us over into a brand new year. And God, we come here, uh, with the words pressed upon our heart that we are not here to play, to dream, or to drift. We have work to do and loads to lift. Shine at this task, it is our gift. And so God, I pray a fresh anointing rests upon our mayor, God, that you would govern her, that you would keep her, that you would be with her, and that you would give her the insight and wisdom that she needs to lead, um, this city's constituents. Um, God, I pray with the council persons, God, that you'll give them a spirit of cohesiveness and they'll continue to work together. God, I pray for every city worker, I pray for every city official. Uh, may they purpose in their heart to do all that they've been tasked to do in this season of agreement and this season of multiplication. And then God, be with us the constituents, help us to lend our hands, help us to lend our ears, help us to lend whatever we can, that we may go forth in this year, that we'll come to the end of this year, and we will declare that, um, better is the ending of a thing than the beginning. And so God, we thank you for all that you've done, we thank you for all that you're going to do. And we declare and we decree that favor shall rest upon the leadership of this city. And we will become the city of unlimited possibilities, opportunities, and dreams. And so God, we just thank you, we declare it's already done. And so your blessing is to be upon each and every leader. Now unto him who is able to do absolutely anything but fail. We give you all the glory, honor, and praise forevermore. Amen.
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 That's my flag bishop.
That's it, that's it, that's it, that's it. Wonderful, wonderful twenty twenty-two city of Carson.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, can I take this opportunity to congratulate Bishop G on his new location, you all's new location. Uh, he's doing some, some wonderful work in the city of Long Beach and, uh, it's just a wonderful thing. So I just wanted to congratulate you on your new location, Bishop G, thanks for coming to pray with us.
Thank you, thank you, and, uh, here's our early, uh, fine new pie on tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow's Founder's Day, let them know, shimmy, shimmy on out of here.
Thank you so much. Uh, to my colleagues, I wanna add an item, it's a presentation from Robert Ferrante. Came up, uh, he's a chief engineer and general manager of LA County Sanitation District. And it's to give us an update regarding the sewer spill on, uh, at two twelve and Linton. So I wanna add that, so we'll have that under presentations. Okay? Then also.
No objection.
Oh, okay.
No objection.
And then also I'm gonna take the liberty to move up item number thirty, uh, which is listed on our agenda. And that item is, consider the selection of a mayor pro tem for the next two years. Uh, section C of the city charter says states that the mayor pro tem shall be selected biannually in the month of January for two terms by majority vote of the city council. So I wanna make a motion that we, uh, uh, appoint, uh, House Speaker Bishop Jawan Hilton to serve in that capacity.
Second.
Third. Second, third. Fourth.
Thank you for the top honor, I appreciate it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Uh, and so now we have a, um, closed session items two and three, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, happy new year, everybody, uh, and welcome, uh, Dr. Brachas, our city clerk. I look forward to working with you. Um, the council will hear, uh, will meet in closed session on two items, uh, pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, seven point six, to confer with, uh, David Roberts, Acting City Manager, on labor negotiations regarding AIM CPSA affiliated with SEIU Local seven two one, absentee one zero one seven, and absentee local eight oh nine. The council will meet pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine E one, because there is a significant exposure to litigation in one case. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, uh, is there any com, public comment on closed session items, Madam City Clerk?
Uh, none that I see at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. So we're gonna leave and go into, uh, closed session, and we will be returning here within the next thirty minutes. Thirty, thirty to forty-five minutes, okay?
Hopefully.
Hopefully less.
Oh yeah, you guys gotta make it happen, I have faith, this is twenty twenty-two.
We are live, Mayor.
Well, thank you, everyone. We're reconvening our regular scheduled meetings. Madam City Attorney, report on enclosed session items, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council met in closed session pursuant to government code section 54957.6 to confer with its labor negotiator regarding labor negotiations with AIM CPSA affiliated SEIU Local 721 ASME 1017 and ASME Local 809. No reportable action was taken. The council met pursuant to government code section 54956.9E1 because there's a potential litigation in one matter and no reportable action was taken there either.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. And now we're going to item number four, report from the one and only Captain Jones of the Carson Sheriff Station. Hi, Captain. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everyone. Happy New Year, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I pray you all had a Merry Christmas and a safe New Year.
Yes, we did.
Okay, very good, very good. So, it's been a while since I gave an update. Since our last update, we've been very busy here at the station. Been very involved in a lot of different events, some community events, some events we put on here at the station. I'll just go over a few of them and also give you a couple of updates regarding some crime stats and different things going on. We participated in a meet and greet event at the International Institute of Tolerance. Mayor Pro Tim Dear was there with us sometime late last month, the month before, and it was a very good event. We were able to speak and meet and greet with some different members of the Islam religion. And what was good about it is we discussed inclusiveness and appreciating one another's differences. And so, we're looking forward to doing some events in the future with them. They were very thankful for our presence as well as us participating. As you guys may have seen, we held our annual needy family food and toy giveaway. That was really exciting and very good event. We were able to assist and help nearly 200 families where we gave out a bunch of toys away, some gift cards for food, helped some of the elderly out, gave those normal cookies away. Everybody likes those sugar cookies, so we gave a bunch of sugar cookies away. And then, everyone really enjoyed the opportunity to take photos with Santa. So, we had Santa out, took a photo with Santa, a lot of families are out there, a lot of good times. Following that, we had a shop with a cop event. This was really a touching event. We were able to identify some local families in our area who were having some financial challenges or just needed a little helping hand. We got those children, those parents, those guardians. They came out with the help of Norms and Target. We all met at Norms earlier, right before we went to shop. We fed them well, they had full bellies, ate whatever they wanted. You know, they got the pancakes, the steak and eggs and everything. And then, we went over to Target and we paired each kid up with members of our community relations teams, our parks teams, and our SAO teams. And they got to go around the entire Target, choose whatever items they wanted, from toys to necessities to gifts for parents and family members. And it was just an exciting time. And what made me so proud was, you know, there was a certain limit that was given for each kid. But our SAO team and parks teams and community relations deputies, they took it upon themselves to go in their own pocket, bring out their own credit card or ATM cards to make sure they can cover the difference because they didn't want any child to have to put anything back. So, it was a really good event, a lot of excitement, it was really good, and we really enjoyed it. And we're looking forward to it next year because it was such a great bonding event. On the 19th of last month, we partnered up with the Vikings Charity Organization where we went down and put together over 1,000 food baskets. Our volunteers, our explorers, and our deputies were all involved in it. And then, our volunteers and explorers and deputies came back to the station and delivered a lot of those food baskets to some local senior citizens within our community. So, that was a very rewarding event that took place. We know that you all have received some complaints regarding some of the homeless issues along the 110 freeway in Carson Street. We just want you to know that our SAO team is continuing to work with Highway Patrol as well as Caltrans to make sure we address it appropriately in some of those issues. Although some of the concerns and issues are on the property of Caltrans or CHP, our SAO team is still making their efforts. They actually went out yesterday and today. They got some of those folks to move along and clean up their property and debris, but they're going to continue to make efforts. Another thing, we noticed over the past three months, there's been a high number of false crime reports being filed. So, this message really to our residents, we know there's times where things don't go right. You may feel embarrassed, you become angry. But please, please do not deliberately file a false criminal or police report. It is a crime, it takes a lot of our resources out to go either try to find the alleged suspect or to do an investigation where they can be putting that effort towards something else. As well as, it could lead to a misdemeanor or felony conviction for yourself or even jail time. So, we don't want to see that happen. You know, sometimes things don't go our way, but the wrong decision is to file a false police report. So, please do not do that. Also, along those same lines, if you need to report a crime or some situation that is happening, we are proud that many of our residents have made contacts and made friends with our deputies. But please don't call that deputy or that sergeant or lieutenant that you know. Please call the station at the eight three oh one one two three number or dial nine one one. Uh, because when you call that deputy, he didn't tell you call the station or he calls the station. There's a little bit of a delay. And those delays sometimes can be the difference between us apprehending those who are committing a crime. So if something is happening and you need a deputy to come out, please call the station at three one zero eight three zero one one two three or nine one one if it's an emergency. Uh, just want to, you know, remind you guys the deputies are actively doing self-initiated proactive police work. They're doing everything they can to address issues and crime, um, and make sure they keep up the quality of life in our, in our area. Uh, and some of the proof of that is, you know, I think you guys may have seen, um, on the news, newspaper or web or on the web that violent crime is up throughout L A County and the state. But I am happy to report with the support of our acting city manager, our mayor and you all, the city council and the resources that you always fund and ensure that we have. We had no change here in the city of Carson from twenty twenty one in that amount of homicides. Our aggravated assaults were down by forty two. Our deputies with you guys' support and providing resources over last year were able to bring in a hundred fifty three handguns, twenty eight rifles and over fifteen shotguns. So those efforts and being proactive and being out there brought those weapons off the street which led to our aggravated assaults going down. So I want to thank you all for your support and providing those resources. Um, I'll end my report just on giving you an update on some of, some recent arrests that I think play a major role and show that our deputies are out there doing their job and, and being safe as well as making the community better. Um, well, the first one, you guys may have seen it on TV. It was a pursuit that was all over every channel. Uh, where they were pursuing a box truck. It was a box truck that was stolen here, um, in our area. Our deputies and their proactive work identified, found the truck, led to a pursuit and luckily they were able to bring that suspect, uh, to be captured as well as into custody um, without anyone else being hurt. And I just want to say that, that is a example of some of the hard work that our deputies are doing, our, and our local businesses were able to get their truck returned. And the second, uh, arrest that I wanted to highlight was unfortunately, we did have one of our residents at a local shopping, local shopping center a few weeks ago who was robbed. Um, from the robbery, their car was stolen. And once again, our proactive deputies, um, and being vigilant, being out looking for their vehicle, located the vehicle, it led to another pursuit which ended up in the city of Compton. Suspect ran, got a, became a barricaded suspect. But with that team effort, bringing out our K nine and different things, once again, we were able to identify, capture that suspect, get our resident back his vehicle, um, as well as give him a little bit of peace of mind. So those are some of the efforts I just want to show you where the deputies that you pay for are out there making a difference. Um, just know that we are out here at the station continuing, continuing with our commitment to engage the community and properly officially address issues. I just want to thank you guys once again for your support of the hard work and men and women here at the Carson Sheriff Station. Uh, that pretty much concludes my report this evening. Does anyone have any questions?
Um, I have not really a question, Captain, but, uh, I just want to, um, express to all the, uh, deputies and civilian personnel at the Carson Station that we really appreciate the diligence that, uh, is put forward. It shows in the results of your, your efforts. Um, people of Carson appreciate it and, uh, so please wish a Happy New Year, uh, from us to all of your, uh, staff.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Captain, uh, for all your hard work and everything that you're doing and appreciate you very much.
Ma'am, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
You have just one quick question. Uh, Captain Jones and Deputy, thank you for all what you've done for the city and you made it through to twenty twenty two. My question is regarding the, the equipment that actually, um, for speed to let you know how fast you're going in the neighborhood. I know that we were trying to get a new one. Where are we at on that?
Uh, you know, Lieutenant Boder, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
So you have the, what, what the latest update is, um, for, uh, Councilman Hicks? Or do you know or can you get that for him regarding where we stand on trying, working with the city on purchasing some new speed trailers?
Yes, I believe we were in the process over the summer and, um, it got denied by the last city manager. And so we're in the process of doing a new E P to, um, get another one.
Okay.
All right.
You know, Councilmember Hicks, what I'll do between myself and Lieutenant Boder, we'll sit down with the acting city manager, uh, Dave Roberts, and we'll make sure everything is on the right track to make sure we can purchase that for the city.
Cedric, I couldn't hear you. What did, you just asked a question. What did you say?
I said deny.
I was, what, what does it, that, never mind. I'm, you know, I'm on medication, so I don't want to say the wrong thing, but I'm just, it don't make no sense. That you don't deny, when we, at council, we said that we were getting a new speed, uh, trap. How did that even happen?
Well, maybe the captain can explain. Um, when you say, when the captain says denied, it has to go through a process with his higher ups and then I guess the county board of supervisors are, so can you explain it to us, Captain Jones?
Honestly, I don't know about the denial aspect. That's why I was just telling, I, you know, Lieutenant Boder mentioned denial. So I'll have to see the paperwork or what, whatever conversations. But I was just, uh, reassuring him that going forward, um, I will ensure that Lieutenant Boder works with the acting city manager's office and make sure that we move forward on trying to purchase those for the city.
Good idea. Thank you.
Um, maybe this is a question to Dave Roberts, um, the, if, is there any information on the substation at, on university? Are you going to bring us a report back next meeting?
We would be bringing you a report back, yes, uh, Madam Mayor, but, uh, we have been, uh, in constant contact or the attempts to contact, uh, the property manager. As a matter of fact, uh, we're working with our city attorney, um, Sunny Saltani in her office, Anne Lambfar, who is a, uh, who's been an excellent, uh, attorney there in, in, in some of the acquisitions of properties here in the city. And so she's also in, in, uh, the same attempts to contact the property manager. We just sent out another, uh, message this morning uh, to that, to the individual, uh, waiting for their response. He finally did respond and said that he would be responding back to us soon. But, um, we've advised the urgency and the necessity for this as we have been for the last ninety days. And, and so we will be having an update though for you at the next meeting.
Okay, I'm going to request that that be on, uh, our agenda until it's complete.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Uh, any more questions for our captain?
I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, uh, Captain. Uh, in, in the day where people are attempting to defund the police and, uh, all of those things, I just would like to, um, could you make us aware of what's going on at our local schools? Um, I understand that at Carson High, uh, we don't have, uh, any police, uh, presence anymore. Uh, at our, at our high schools and those, those places that would normally have those things. And I know that we don't police those areas. Uh, but can you give some assurance to, um, and I'm reaching out and I possibly would like my colleagues to, um, echo the same sentiments to our board member of, uh, L A U S D that we still need, uh, police on campus. Um, I understand that they're trying to divert all the money, uh, to mental health resources, but particularly uh, our communities are the ones that's struggling because, um, uh, these children may act up or something of some sort. Well, are you guys working with our, our high schools or our schools at any level, Captain?
Yeah, yes, sir, we are. And yes, you know, there has been a change in the, uh, personnel assigned to the various schools at our middle schools, high schools, and as well as even elementaries throughout the L A Unified throughout our area. But we do have a school resource deputy, Deputy Borhurkis, who, you know, she's, works out of our station, um, and she goes around and still makes contact with all the administrators at those local schools and does her best to even stay in contact with L A School Police. Um, and however their jurisdiction works now, if they do, you know, different areas or zones or whatever, so that we can still do everything we can to keep our children safe.
Uh, Captain, on that same line, do we still have a truancy officer?
No, we just have the Deputy Borhurkis, which is the school resource deputy. So along with the S A O team, sometimes they'll work with truancy. Uh, but that is such a tough thing because we have so many independent study kids now and kids come in and go at so many different times from the classroom. It makes it a little bit of challenging and enforce some of the truancy rules.
Okay, okay. Any more questions? Uh, you're going to give us information back on the school like the Mayor Pro Tim Hilton just mentioned, right? You give us updated information.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Very good. Uh, if there are no more questions, I want to thank you again, Captain, and glad to have you here and a Happy New Year to you and all of your deputies.
Thank you, ma'am. You guys have a blessed evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number five, report from the Assistant Chief Bennett of the Los Angeles County Fire Department.
Hello, uh, good evening, Mayor, City Council and, uh, residents who might be tuning in. First of all, Happy New Year to all of you. Uh, I think we're all ready to get going on two thousand twenty two. Um, before I give my response report, I wanted to just touch on, um, a little bit about what our department's facing right now, uh, with COVID. Uh, our department, your local emergency rooms, as well as the ambulance companies. Uh, so we, we have a daily conference call with our medical director, who is the doctor assigned to our fire department, and, uh, we are testing our firefighters daily. And as of this morning, we have four hundred and fifty firefighters that are positive with COVID and off work. So what that means is that, uh, the firefighters that are working now, um, you know, in the city of Carson and around, uh, the county are, are being, uh, asked to work extra hours, extra days. Uh, we have not reduced any service, um, that we provide from the fire department. So our engines are full, our stations are full, uh, but our folks are, just as our partners in the sheriff's department, they are being, uh, stressed and are to their limit. Um, so even more so, or where we're seeing effects is our local emergency rooms. So just like this, um, this variant is extremely contagious and we're seeing residents in the community, um, probably more than half of what we're going on are positive with COVID. So with that, early on, uh, like just before New Year's Eve, uh, there was a surge coming into the emergency rooms. And many of your emergency room workers were also infected and are now positive, so have been sent home. So an already stressed system and the emergency departments are now working on a limited staff with more of the residents coming into the hospitals. And then, uh, your, uh, ambulance companies, same thing. They are, again, already a stressed system, limited, uh, resources, limited personnel. They're now affected with probably about fifty percent of their employees now off on COVID. So things are slower, uh, moving through the emergency department. There's less ambulances out there. And, uh, our response times for the ambulance companies have, uh, increased greatly. So what our, our fire chief did is, uh, put into place and he's approved an emergency transport policy for the fire department. So now, uh, kind of unheard of, we're actually transporting patients. So if we go on scene of a critical patient, um, they're being transported actually in the fire truck to the hospital. Um, we're encouraging as, as our fire captains and our paramedics get out in the communities and, uh, there's may, maybe a, a basic first aid or a basic response. They're encouraging the residents to either, uh, find a private vehicle or alternative methods to get to the hospital so that we can save those ambulances for the critical patients in, in your community. So this is kind of unprecedented. We're, you know, we're definitely not to the peak of our, uh, COVID infections that we're seeing in the community and the apartment, but, uh, we're doing everything we can not to interrupt any service. So things are, uh, according to our medical director from this morning, we think maybe a peak and, uh, middle to late January. Uh, so it's going to get worse before it gets better, but, um, I'm staying in contact with our local battalion chiefs. They're out visiting, uh, the hospitals to make sure that the process of getting our patients offloaded and the ambulances are happening and where we can stack up patients on a single ambulance, we're going to do that to get those things back out in your community. So we're, uh, we're working daily. We've, uh, stood up on an incident management team just to deal with staffing and ambulance shortages, uh, due to COVID. And unfortunately, this is, uh, probably the next couple of weeks are going to be really trying for, uh, the fire department or the emergency rooms and for your ambulance companies. So we'll, uh, we'll keep you up to date. I'll keep, uh, information coming over to, uh, Dave Roberts there, uh, should we see any drastic changes. But as of right now, we're just, uh, everybody stepping up, working hard and, and trying to get through this. So, um, I'll move into the response report and then I'll take any questions, uh, that you guys might have, whether it be COVID or the responses. Uh, so for the month of, um, uh, December, we had eight hundred and forty one total incidents in the city of Carson. Six hundred and forty eight of those were, uh, EMS calls. We had, uh, twenty seven of them being fire calls and, uh, just under a hundred with miscellaneous service calls, uh, good intent calls and, uh, false alarms. Uh, the average response time for the units in Carson was four minutes and fifty five seconds, which puts us well under uh, what myself, the battalion chief's, uh, Department of, uh, Health Services requires of your units. So they're getting out there to get into your residents, uh, quick and, uh, over the last couple of months, I haven't seen, uh, any major issues with response times from the fire department. So those folks are out there working hard and, uh, and, and doing their best to stay healthy, make sure the residents are healthy and get to the hospitals in a timely manner. So that's my report, end of report, and I'm happy to take any questions, uh, from mayor or council.
Mayor Pro Tim, um, Mayor Pro Tim Hilton.
Uh, Chief, thanks for, uh, getting on the line tonight. You talked about this, um, this COVID arise. Uh, can you, uh, help us? Um, some people were characterizing it as, um, a common cold, almost like common cold system, uh, um, symptoms. The CDC has, uh, decreased the, the time. Uh, but from what I understand is California has not just decreased the, um, uh, the isolation time.
Yes, absolutely correct. So with the Omicron variant, um, while it is much, much more contagious than the original Delta, what we're seeing is that our patients are not as sick. So the CDC did come out with a five-day isolation. Uh, however, for the fire department and most of L A County, we are sticking to that seven to ten days. Because what they're also seeing is that, um, while we might, you know, be a, feel like a common cold, where we're most infectious is just at, either just before symptoms arise and to that twenty four to forty eight hours after, which puts you right at that five to six day mark. So our medical director and a lot of the local, um, clinicians in, in L A County are actually not following that CDC guideline of five, but going to that seven to ten, which is, it's tougher on the fire department, tougher on some of the, um, you know, the community services, but ultimately that two extra days can really limit the infection spread.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more comments, questions?
Uh, yes, I've, I've got one. Um, to Brian, uh, your response time you mentioned was four point five four seconds. Uh, was that the average of calls for all services or just calls for, uh, EMS or just calls for fire?
That's going to be a, uh, a average response time for all, and I believe it's like a nine different response time, uh, average.
You nine different responses that you?
Yes. Yep. So, yeah, so some of them, you know, were in that, uh, five minutes. I'm just looking here, five minutes, six seconds. Some are, you know, four minutes and forty seconds, but the, to, uh, the average, which is real critical, the average, uh, medical response time was four minutes and forty six seconds. So actually a little bit, little bit less than that. Yeah, yeah. Which is what we like to see. Those are those, I mean, they're all important, but especially those EMS calls are what we really focus on.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about the EMS because obviously every second
Absolutely.
makes a difference. I mean, it would with a fire as well, but, uh,
Yeah.
with EMS, it's, uh, really critical. Okay, that was what I was getting at and I appreciate the answer. And thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Benny, for, thank you, uh, very much. Uh, Councilwoman.
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, do you have, I'm going back to the, uh, the positive COVIDs. Do you have a, a, a number or a? positive COVIDs, do you have a, a, a number or a percentage on how many that were infected, were vaccinated and received a booster? Do, do you have that?
I, I don't, I don't have the specifics, but I'm happy to share with uh our department in general. So I, I think our last report, we were hanging at that seventy percent and now um we are probably less than ten percent that have been vaccinated, uh and a large portion of that ninety percent have received boosters. We haven't mandated the booster within the department. We're still just trying to get as close to a hundred percent on the vaccinations. However, I will say that um those that have had vaccinations and or boosters are feeling, are a lot less sick. Uh, we're seeing that in the community as well as in the fire department. Our, our really, our only hospitalizations from COVID since the beginning have been non-vaccinated employees.
Thank you, thank you very much for that answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Well, I want to thank you Chief Bennett for coming out and being with us um at our meeting. We really appreciate it. It provides valuable information to the, not only the city council, but our residents. So we look forward to seeing you here at future council meetings. So thank you very much.
Uh, you are welcome again. Happy New Year to all and uh we'll hopefully next time I'll be, uh won't be mobile, be able to uh start up this video. But uh you guys stay uh, stay safe out there and please reach out uh should you have any further questions.
Okay. And I'm gonna take the liberty because um our Chief Engineer and General Manager, Robert Florenti, is here from LA County Sanitation District. Uh, that was the item that I added and I know he has his entire team with him today. I, and we've been in constant contact with his staff, uh David, uh Roberts and I, and I had, did have an opportunity yesterday uh to visit the site. I didn't know that everyone was gonna be there. I just wanted to go and greet the residents, but I just want to thank you for taking the time from your schedule and coming out and sharing with us. And then I also want to, uh after your presentation, I want to remind you of a letter that I sent you in May, on May fifth, outlining exactly the same thing that I felt was gonna happen. So thank you for coming out and you can introduce your team.
Sure, uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City, thank you, City Council for uh allowing me to, to come and speak today. I'm, as the mayor said, I'm Robert Florenti. I'm the Chief Engineer and General Manager for the sanitation districts. Um, with me today is Brian Langpep. He's our Public Information Officer and he's going to be running kind of a presentation. I have a few slides to go through um with you all and I think hopefully everybody sees those slides.
Yes, we do.
Good. So a little bit about the districts real quickly. A lot of people get confused. Are we, are we a, a county department? Uh, what are we exactly? We are a special district government agency that handles wastewater treatment for most of Los Angeles County, including the and I'm here today to discuss the uh wastewater spill that occurred on December thirtieth. If I can have the next slide. This slide shows the uh location of where the spill occurred. It was on two twelfth street and we received the notification around two o'clock on Thursday, uh December thirtieth. Um, since you know it was raining last week during the week, we always, when it's raining, we have crews uh out in our uh sewer network and we have them on standby. So they responded fairly quickly. Uh, they identified of course where the spill was, confirmed it was spilling from our sewer. And then they worked to figure out what was the cause of the spill. And they saw that adjacent to the one-ten freeway there was a uh collapsed sewer. It was about half a mile away and it's down where two-twentieth street meets the one-ten freeway. If I can have the next slide. The sewer that failed uh was sixty years old. Uh, its replacement, uh many of you probably uh realize was being built. Uh, that's a lot of the work on Figueroa, uh where a lane has been taken away in either direction there. Uh, so that the, the replacement for the sewer that failed was being built. But when the sewer collapsed, it plugged the sewer line, causing the sewage to back up into the system and overflow from the lowest manhole. And the lowest manhole was along two-twelfth. Uh, one was at uh Linton Avenue and the other one at Moneta Avenue. And um we were fairly lucky that it was minimized to that location. There was a storm drain right at two-twelfth street and Moneta. And you can see the path of the wastewater that flowed along the dash line through the uh underground storm drain system. And then uh ultimately into the torrent's lateral, that's a open channel. And uh then it uh flowed into Dominguez Channel. If I can have the next slide. Uh, I have a series of pictures which kind of show the event and show our response. Uh, this is the overflow on two-twelfth with the camera pointed east. Um, homes are on the south side or the right side. And there's a small landscape planter on the other side and then a wall. And then you can see there's a, there's a uh warehouse or a business on the other side. As you can see, the overflow was mostly in the street, but it did go into the uh planter on the north side, onto the grass parkway and up uh a little bit of the driveways for each of the neighbors. If I can have the next slide. This was the sinkhole that was created uh by the collapse of the sewer. Uh, this is uh a picture taken. Our crews had already started to isolate the area, work with Caltrans to uh be able to get access to the site. Um, and this is adjac- right adjacent to the one-ten freeway. Um, and it is right by the A-one uh All-American Roofing Building, if you're familiar with that on the freeway. Next slide. Here, so whenever, whenever a sewer is plugged, we have to fix that as soon as possible. And there's um ideally, we would uh unplug the blockage. But in this case, the blockage was extensive, it was deep down. So what we had to do was set up a bypass. And here you can see shortly after arriving, they're already putting out the bypass piping and getting it ready. They've closed the one-ten north uh off-ramp, working with Caltrans, so we can get our vehicles in there. And the bypass is exactly uh what that means. It'll take the sewage from in of the uh plug, pump it around where the sewer is clogged and discharge it to the open side of the sewer on the other side. Next slide. These are just some pictures showing the work. Um, since there have been uh our district staff, as well as emergency contractors, have been on site since the inception of the spill and doing work. Here you can see they're connecting um up the portable pumps. Each one of those, uh that's, that, that yellow box there is a portable pump that'll suck the wastewater out from before the plug and discharge it downstream. Next um slide. You can see uh besides working on the bypass, we wanted to also start the excavation and um get in and get the sewer back in service. So this is Friday, this is New Year's Eve, two forty-five AM. We're getting the shoring in place. We have an excavator that arrived as well. And um you can see the yellow arrow, arrow is pointing at one of the bypass lines is already starting to bypass sewage around the uh collapsed section. Next slide. Later that morning, here's a overview. This is actually taken from the walkway uh to the school that's um over the freeway uh there. And you can see the excavator on the left. The excavator was great. Since we're doing that other contract, we were able to move that excavator over quickly. And that helped us with some of the initial digging, but it was fairly tight and we didn't want to do any additional damage to the sewer pipe. So our main uh tool was that big white truck, which is called a, a vacuum truck that can spray high-pressure water in to break apart the dirt and then it can collect it. And um it uses that, it has a vacuum, kind of like a vacuum cleaner, sucking that mixture of dirt and mud out and clearing the pipe. Uh, to the right, you can see that the off-ramp was closed to make space for all the construction equipment. And at this time, at the end of the arrow, you can see um that blue arrow, you can see two bypass pipes are full and two more are waiting to be connected. Uh, at this point, um we were still spilling, but a, a much less uh reduced volume of water. Next slide, please. This is just an enclosed showing, uh enclosed picture uh at the bottom of the excavation. You can't see much because the sewer is still completely uh buried, but you can see the worker on the right positioning the vacuum tube. Uh, again, you can see that colored metal is the shoring to prevent the uh pit from collapsing. He's probably down around fifteen feet at this point. Next slide. So we were able uh to, on, on Friday night, um, get enough bypass pumps on to completely stop the spill. And that occurred at uh nine PM. And our, besides the crews working at the collapse site, we had crews then cleaning the street at two-twelfth overnight. And you can see, this is a picture of two-twelfth and Moneta uh after it had been um flushed and cleaned uh by our uh uh sewer crew. You can also have a good view of the catch basin there. That's where the flow went into, into the storm drain system. Next slide. Here's just another picture after um our crews had done that initial flush um of the sewer after, I mean, of, of the street after the um, the spill had stopped. Um, things looked good, but there was still a slight uh odor uh along the street because of course the wastewater had gotten into uh, had really gotten into the street and the driveway and some of the dirt on the sides. Go to the next slide. As work was being done there Saturday morning, we were uh still working at the collapse site. Ultimately, they got eight uh bypass pumps online. The peak flow in the sewer line is midday, so we wanted to make sure that we were not gonna have any problems with capacity and bypassing all the flow. Um, and in each of those, it's, it was a relatively short line to pull out of the sewer. It was twenty-five, thirty feet to a manhole to pull out, but it was over eight hundred feet to discharge to a downstream manhole. So they had to run those lines all along the uh, kind of along the side of the one-ten freeway and through a sound wall to discharge into a sewer. Another picture, uh next slide. You can see now that they've been making progress on the excavation. You can see the top of the sewer. Uh, I, I, I'm sorry, you can see the bottom of the sewer. The top of the sewer has completely crumbled during the collapse. You could also see a worker in the back that is near a manhole structure. Most of that manhole structure collapsed as well. Um, the worker there is using that high-pressure spray and another is guiding the vacuum tube. And um, yeah, you can see that blue arrow really shows you the edge of the sewer line. Next slide. Work continued uh of course into Sunday. You can see how congested the site got with all the equipment um kind of confined in that area. Um, our staff, but also the contractors that responded really did a good job being there uh full-time and providing full crews. And you can see that blue arrow underneath the truck. You can see all eight bypass lines running underneath the black truck. Um, that is an, another vacuum truck that is serving to uh clear out the debris in the collapsed sewer. Next slide. One thing we did uh too is we had to clear out all the debris and a lot of it, a lot of that dirt uh from the collapse went into the sewer and downstream. And we use, and we use this robotic vehicle here uh to inspect the inside of the sewers. This will actually run on the bottom of the sewer. It's got a camera that can um move in multiple directions to be able to uh kind of uh zoom in on different things. And we wanted to make sure the pipe downstream was clear uh before we put the pipe back into service. Next slide. And I'm pleased to report, uh, the mayor mentioned that she was out there at the work site uh yesterday afternoon. Later in that day, we were able to get the sewer back in service, so we didn't have to rely on the bypass pumps. And you can see there in the bottom, you can see the flow going through. And they had put uh sandbags there to, to stop the flow while they were doing investigations before putting it into service. And you can see the excavator is starting, it's taking out all those sandbags. And the flow uh is back, going through the sewer now, and that's let us turn off the bypass pumping system. Obviously, we're not going to uh leave it like that. I'll, I'll talk about the repair for that in a second, but if I can get the next slide. I do want to go over a few of the things that we've done. Uh, we realized this was a tremendous impact to those, especially to those residents living on two-twelfth that um, you know, had the uh wastewater flow going through the street. We've had um multiple uh cleanings of the street. We had a third party come in, clean harbors and clean the street, as well as uh we got permission from the residents to clean their driveways. That occurred on January third. Um, we're, later this week, uh we've been coordinating with the residents uh to bring out a car detailing service because a number of those cars that were parked in the street or who came home during that time unfortunately had to drive through the wastewater. So um we'll also allow if, if the residents want to uh go someplace else to their own place, but uh we will bring a service to them, to the, to the street, to the homes to actually wash and detail their cars. As I mentioned, um the wastewater got into the parkway, really on both sides of the street. So on the north side, which is really city property, we've already, as, as the mayor said, we've been working with the city closely and got approval to be able to change out, uh remove the top couple of inches of soil there and put in fresh, clean soil. And on the neighbor's side of the street too, uh we will be um taking out, uh most of them had grass, we'll be taking that grass out, taking out a couple of inches of dirt and replacing it with brand-new sod uh as well. So we've been working very, very closely with the residents. Really appreciated the mayor going out too and uh we were able to, to join her. Um, as far as the permanent repair, uh we're moving quickly on that. We've already ordered a replacement pipe for that section. It'll be delivered, um hopefully on Monday is the scheduled delivery and our crews will be ready to be, begin work uh shortly after that. Uh, immediately, we already have a contractor lined up and ready to go. We expect the work to be finished and the site restored within four or five days at that location. And then we can of course open that one-ten northbound off-ramp. The other thing we're doing is we're looking throughout our sewer system in that area. And any place there's any visible issue, we're also going to go in there and uh do an emergency repair. So we'll be doing that. So there might be additional locations that um we uh have the contractor go in and uh replace the pipe and make sure we don't have any problems. The other impact uh besides to the residents wa- was to water quality. And um the, our local beaches were already closed because of the storm. But uh public health, of course, and with the sewer spill, um, we have been doing monitoring and public health has been doing monitoring at the beaches. And I'm pleased to report that most of the beaches are open, uh inter Uh Inter Pueblo Beach is uh still remains closed, but it looks like the the uh bacteria numbers were very good at that beach. And hopefully tomorrow it might be reopened. In Long Beach, uh they do their own monitoring. They did not monitor over the weekend, so they were awaiting the result today. To see about opening a couple of beaches there. Uh hopefully their numbers look good too. As far as the Dominguez Channel, obviously, we had been working, of course, with Public Works. Through the odor through the odor issue with them. So uh we continued. Public Works has been helpful in uh uh with the monitoring. And we've been doing our own monitoring in the Dominguez Channel. And I'm pleased, even though this was a substantial spill. That there was a lot of flow going into Dominguez Channel from the um from the storm event, so. So it was uh the wastewater was really diluted. The critical parameter we've been looking at is the dissolved oxygen concentration in the Dominguez Channel. And it has been staying steady between four point five and seven point six milligrams per liter. So that's a pretty good sign. That means that it's not in a position to go what's called anaerobic, of course, and generate hydrogen sulfide and generate odors. And really to wrap up, I I mentioned this to all the residents yesterday, but I'd I'd like the. The mayor and city council to know. I do wanna apologize for this spill. No one, no community really uh would ever want to experience a spill and wake up and open your doors to this. And especially those impacts to the residents. I want you to know that uh you know, we're not gonna spare any expense in making the repair. And also, we've already um brought in a third party um engineering consultant. Who's familiar with corrosion and sewer issues. Uh they're uh experts in this to identify why that sewer collapsed. And um what we need to do to uh better evaluate our sewer systems. To prevent this from ever occurring again. And that's a report that I'll be sharing with um our my sanitation district's directors. But we'll be sharing, of course, with the public and with the city of Carson as well. Um with that, I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Okay, I've got a question, Madam Mayor, for uh for Robert. Robert, uh can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so um I also went out to the site, to both sites, uh two twelve as well as uh two twentieth because. I uh live across the street from uh the sewer collapse and I've been dealing with the construction by the sand district uh along Figueroa Street. So I live uh a short block from the actual repair site. And uh you can see it from the pedestrian bridge pretty clearly when you look down. So a couple of questions. One is, at the site where the collapse took place, there had been a chain link fence, uh like a. Rectangular shaped fenced in area um around the manholes that were visible on the surface. Uh for years, many, many years. And then just recently, the fence was removed. Did it have anything to do with the uh sewer collapse or is this coincidence?
I think that's just coincidence. I think the two manholes that you're referring to were probably put in in. Those were the ones that were put in in the nineties when Caltrans redid the um the off ramp there. Um we do not see any evidence of foul play as of yet with respect to the sewer collapse. We have, as we dug out the sewer, we um uh tried to keep as many of the. Components of the sewer as possible in the manhole structure and that's going to be part of the investigation to see. You know, whether it was just corrosion that caused it to fail or there was something else.
There was also a um homeless encampment uh within that chain link fence. They had kind of uh occupied the space. And um I guess by lucky coincidence, they had been removed. Right where the sinkhole formed. So thank goodness they were not sleeping there at the time and that would have been a terrible disaster. Um the other question I have is uh uh the construction on Figueroa Street, it it does take a long time. Uh takes, I guess they were above Carson Street, uh again, right in my neighborhood. Uh for over a year and uh it looks like they're gonna be here for a year south of Carson Street as they move south. Um um are they installing a brand new uh sewer line or replacing a sewer line? Or putting a sewer line next to an old sewer line? Can you explain that?
Sure. It is a brand new sewer line that not only uh is built to today's standards with respect to uh corrosion protection. But it is larger. The existing line uh that failed was forty-eight inches. The new line is fifty-four inches and that doesn't sound like a uh being a lot bigger, but. When it's the diameter of the sewer, that's a lot more volume. So it is a brand new sewer and the plan. Uh is to eventually take the forty-eight inch out of service.
Because it does corrode and cause a uh non-smooth surface and the new pipe should remain smooth for many years, I think.
Correct. The new pipes come lined uh and uh we have not seen, you know, this has been the standard for the last twenty, thirty years and. We have not seen degradation of the liner. Sometimes you have to go in and reline them, but um it is uh uh. Yeah, a very long lasting um uh construction.
Are there any plans to insert a new pipe, like a forty-five inch pipe, inside the forty-eight inch pipe?
So what we will do right now for the emergency repair, we're going to insert kind of, it'll look like a pipe within a pipe. And they'll push that in to um uh to be the uh replacement interior of the sewer pipe. And so we can run in that way. But ultimately, when we put the line in service on Figueroa. We're probably going to put a much smaller line in that forty-eight inch because it'll only be serving a few of the um laterals. Uh from some of the uh customers on uh you know, further down from south of south of uh that location. So yeah, we would. That would be another job, but that'd be much smaller.
Okay, so another question on the two twelve street location uh. Um you were able to disinfect the public property, the right of way, as well as some private property?
So um what we do, it's kind of standard practice to go in and um. Uh we we sandbag up the storm drain and the first thing we do is flush the area. To get rid of and to clean it up. Uh there are some solid materials and other things, so we we do flush. Uh to clean that up, we recover all of that wastewater and put it back in the sewer. Then we did have a third party come out and they um once again, the storm drain is sandbagged. And they do spray a disinfectant on there. It also has a a fairly pleasant odor. That I think that really removed, you know, ninety-nine, ninety-eight percent of the odor. However, the wastewater did get into um the soil there. And that's why we're going to offer in those locations, whether it's the city. Kind of parkway strip on the north side or the resident side, we're going to remove two inches of soil. The good news is with the sunny days, the last few days, that really helps break down anything. Um and disinfect uh kind of naturally uh for the odors and and other things with wastewater.
Yeah, the the uh exfluent is uh uh biodegradable basically. Um so I would think nature would take its course as far as most of the problem. But I'm really glad that you guys are on top of that uh uh you know, that issue. The sand district does a great job. I served on your board for over a decade. So I I know you you work hard and you're diligent and you really care about the community, so that's much appreciated. Of course, my neighbors are wondering, when are they gonna open up the off ramp or when would the construction uh be complete? Do you you wanna mention that in your presentation, but I didn't quite hear that.
Sure. We're hopeful that um by the end of next week, that the off ramp should be back open. If uh if the pipe comes in uh on the tenth, it will take us a few days to get it installed and then then to button up the site. So we're optimistic after the tenth, four or five days. That by that um you know, January fifteenth, sixteenth, it'll be back in service that weekend, hopefully.
Very good. Now, could you give a uh maybe a summary version of the report you just gave tonight? Uh make it available to our environmental commission in the city of Carson?
Yes, um we can um yeah, we can share the slides and make it available to them um. And have maybe even have a speaker come to their commission meeting and and present it. Absolutely.
I think they would appreciate that.
Okay.
So thank you very much. Uh that's all the questions I have at this point. Madam Mayor, you're muted. If you're trying to talk, you're muted.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from any of my colleagues, Mayor Potem Hilton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um Mr. Ferrante, I just wanna say thank you for the quick response. Of course, no community. Uh likes to go through anything like this, especially since we just came out of uh the Dominguez Channel smell and. Uh the residents were like, here we go again. Uh but your quick response uh lets us know. We're we're appreciate being in partnership with the L A County Sanitation District and appreciate you had a third party engineering. Uh firm on with you to figure out exactly what happened, so this uh will never happen to our community again. Uh so I just wanted to say hats off to you uh today because of that. Um especially after coming through this last thing that we just went through and to have this uh back again. We all received the message. I'm sure all of my colleagues said, not again. So uh uh we appreciate uh the quick response and we appreciate uh mitigating this matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh Councilwoman, comments?
Yes, thank you again, uh Mr. Ferrante, for your presentation. It's informative and yes, we definitely uh feel confident. Um and we thank you uh for your efforts and taking care of the problem so quickly. Thank you.
Uh thank you. Thank all of you for your understanding and patience to get through this. It it we we did respond quickly, but still for the residents and everybody, twenty-four hours is a long time.
Yes, it is.
Uh thank you. My comes I've I've made and my colleagues have made them also, but uh. Robert, on May fifth, I sent a letter in support of our a request for. Two hundred sixteen street replacement trunk sewer project. Do you remember that letter? I sent it to. I sent it to you and in that letter, it said, uh you know, we've the city of Carson, I'm writing to support the congressional. Directed spending request submitted by you to the Los Angeles County Sanitation District number eight. For the two hundred sixteen street replacement trunk sewer project located in the city of Carson. And then I skipped down. I said the two hundred sixteen street replacement trunk sewer will provide state of the art infrastructure. To prevent sanitary sewer overflows. And if awarded, federal funding will help to maintain affordable sewer sewer rates for sanitation district eight rate pairs. Such help is especially important for the district, which is the number of areas identified in the disadvantaged community. In conclusion, I support sanitation district eight request for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For this important uh water quality project because in the letter. It said this project will replace aging sanitary sewer system infrastructure. To prevent sewer failure, the additional capacity that will be provided by this project will protect the public. Health and downstream receiving waters. In the case of sewer failure, any wastewater release. Could reach the Dominguez Channel, channel, Los Angeles Harbor and ultimately the the Pacific Ocean. All of these things happened. And it did happen and the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we were not awarded.
Correct.
Okay, I'm reading this because I wanna know what it is we as a city can do. Or is there anything that we can do as a city? Because we don't wanna this to happen again and I know you have some um. Steps that you're putting in place, some sewer lines that you're putting in place to prevent it. Uh is there anything else we as a city can do to assist in getting some additional funding here? Because my biggest concern is this. One of my other concerns is this. All the news media is talking about the beaches. The beaches were closed. The beaches were this. The impact was right here in the city of Carson. And I don't want us to be lost in this shuffle if there's gonna be some funding and it ends up in the beach areas. One of my residents were the ones that were impacted negatively because the beaches were gonna close anyway because of the storm. They were gonna close. So I wanna make sure that we're in the forefront. And that if there is revenue to be received, that it comes to the city of Carson. Oftentimes, cities are left holding the bag and then all the beach cities, they end up with all the money. But we on two hundred sixteen um two hundred twelfth and Linton, in our city. We had the direct impact and the direct inconvenience. The beaches were going to be closed anyway because of the storm. So that's what I want to hear from you.
Yes, so that's a very good point and your letter was uh was perfect. And I I I remember when you guys wrote the letter and and uh. Um it it absolutely uh unfortunately, what happened came to pass. Um and we're gonna continue. There's a lot of federal money with the infrastructure dollars and we are looking at it. And we are going to be looking at opportunities to bring a portion of that to the sanitation districts. And especially to the city of Carson. Um you know, we have a lot of infrastructure throughout the city. Uh and there is a great need to maintain that infrastructure. And uh so I think moving forward, I mean, we just need to continue the partnership. And um support frankly each other when it comes to these infrastructure dollars. Being available to make sure and this is for even other things like. Uh you know, roads and some of the bridges and some of the other work that needs to be done too. That can be all packaged together to really update our infrastructure, so it avoids these types of failures. And um you know, I I um appreciate that that um uh we responded quickly. But I never wanna have to respond. I never I have to send staff to respond on these types of events. So I think we just need to continue to work together, Mayor, and um get the message. And work with our local electives, um even at the state and federally that, hey, this is where we need the 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 help. This is where the and and here's a poster child, unfortunately, but here's an example of what happens when you don't. Uh you know, invest in that infrastructure.
And it it to me, it goes back to the the Biden uh. The the infrastructure bill that he's passed and a lot of people were against. This is a clear example to me of why we needed. Funding and I just wanna make sure, David, that we're on top of this, that the city of Carson. Is not an afterthought in all of this and and find out ways that we can make sure we're at the table. And that we're getting the funding that is due the city of Carson. And also, I wanna let our residents know that uh. That there is a claim form that they can submit also for items that uh. The L A sanitation district may not have addressed. Uh there is a claim form and I think we passed those out yesterday in the community. That if there are some additional additional concerns other than what has been presented to you. You have the opportunity to fill out this form and send it to the L A County Sanitation District. Um. I serve on the board. I'm the director uh for our city of Carson and uh it's been a learning experience. I've visited the site. And uh it's kind of it's hands-on. I learned by seeing and doing so. I just wanna thank you for taking my call on a Sunday and then for being here on such short notice. And I also wanna thank Brian, uh you've been very instrumental in working with David and assembling information to get out. To our residents in a timely manner to let them know that we were on top of this and uh appreciate everything you've done. And I'll be looking for that final re- report that's gonna be coming with uh how and why. And what we're gonna do to prevent it. So that's the report that we want to see and then we'll invite you back again.
Okay.
Discuss it even further and you will be invited to our environmental commission because that's a um. We have some very concerned commissioners on that uh environmental commission that wants to be made a price of what has gone on, what has taken place. And what we did to elimi- uh eliminate the problem and to put our residents at ease. I've got a lot of positive feedback from the residents. They were very um supportive of the fact and very pleased with the action that you have taken. The district as a whole to make. the district as a whole to make sure that, uh, their concerns were addressed. So I just want to thank you personally for what you've done. You've been working around the clock. I think Brian has been out and, uh, uh, it's, it was just a lot of people out there that got involved. I know your, uh, other supervisor, what's his name?
Basil.
Basil. He only had two hours of sleep. So he's been working around the clock also. So thank you very much for this presentation. I really appreciate it. And, uh, you and I will be talking soon. I'll be at the meeting, uh, I think it's next week, isn't it?
Next Wednesday, yes.
Wednesday. I'll see you next Wednesday where you give the full report to the, uh, other directors.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your understanding. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, because we do have some presentations and I see the Dominguez Channels on here before, but I want to go into, um, for our residents that are here, I wanted to make sure that they heard the report on the Dominguez Channel. So I want to do a proxim- proclamation acknowledging the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. And we do have a representative here from, uh, the Martin Luther King Democratic Club who will be receiving it. But I will re- read this, uh, proclamation, uh, recognizing month of January as, oh, no, wait a minute, that's wrong. In honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Holiday, whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior was born on January fifteenth, nineteen twenty-nine in Atlanta, Georgia, he was a Baptist minister of social activists who led the civil rights movement until his death by assassination on April fourth, nineteen sixty-eight in Memphis, Tennessee. And whereas Dr. King helped organize and lead the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, which served as a platform for establishing national influence. Under his leadership, the SCLC advocated for civil rights, opposing legalized racial discrimination, disenfranchisement and racial segreg- segregation of African Americans through a nonviolent protest. The March on Washington in nineteen sixty-three demonstrated the power of nonviolent tactics to affect change. And whereas Dr. King also highlighted the importance of public service and its role in eradicating injustice. And whereas Dr. King was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in nineteen sixty-four in recognition of his exceptional exceptional leadership skills and the principles of peace, nonviolence, and direct action. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior life, Junior's life and service is immortalized by the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Holiday, an annual federal holiday first observed in nineteen eight, nineteen eighty-six. And observed as a state holiday in all fifty states beginning in the year of two thousand. And whereas many of the opportunities that we observe in our communities to- today were built on the backs of those that came before us, such as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. And whereas on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven P.M., the city of Carson will celebrate. David, are you listening?
Loud, loud, loud and clear, Madam Mayor, and so is the rest of staff.
Uh, will celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Junior's legacy with your, with a virtual event carrying the theme, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And whereas to commemorate his life and sacrifices, we must aspire to continue making our communities better through the service, not only on Dr. Martin Luther King Junior's birthday, but throughout the year. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of Carson, California do hereby honor Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Holiday on Monday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, in the city of Carson as a national day of service and call upon its citizens of our community to remember and honor Dr. Martin Luther King Junior through participation in community service projects on Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day and throughout the year. It's dated today, this fourth of January, it's signed by the entire city council and is tested to by our city clerk. And here to receive that, um, this certificate is, um, proclamation is, I think, is Ha- oh, Hattie Herring. Hattie is the president of MLK, uh, Democratic Club in the city of Carson. Hattie? Hattie? Hi, Hattie. Hattie, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I, I'm not quite sure what's going on with the, uh, the photos here. But I did want his photo to be, uh, shown as you were reading, not, and not to see my face.
Well, we see him now, his photo.
Okay, so I think, uh, I thank you for that proclamation, uh, that certainly, uh, summarized what he stood for. Um, when I think about right now what's going on, uh, uh, in this, uh, current day, it, it, it just seems like it's a, it's a slap in his face. Um, I think, um, by us acknowledging him, recognizing him, then we can at least keep, um, the dream that he had alive. And, uh, and definitely be motivated to, uh, create the change that he was attempting to change through his whole life. Uh, and, uh, and, and I know a whole lot of us are wanting to see that, uh, see those changes, the injustice, uh, the, uh, discrimination, those things, um, he did not want to see exist. And, uh, we're hoping, um, through the, uh, MLK Democratic Club and other democratic clubs, that we can just kind of focus a little stronger uh, with this upcoming year on some of the, uh, issues such as voting rights. We know that's the big one. That we can get those things corrected, get them corrected and get all people on board because all people should have a right to vote and all people's vote should count. And I see issues constantly coming up with the voting that is just not good. And I can see that that would be something that would be very disturbing, uh, to Dr. King. So thank you for that proclamation, uh, as you, uh, laid that out because it certainly give us those reminders on what we need to be doing, what we should be doing in terms of the values. And making certain that we're still fighting for the truth, equality, fairness, non-discrimination and justice for all. And let us please just keep those things in mind because I tell you, we certainly get a little short sighted when we see some of the things going on. Uh, so thank you, Mayor Lula Davis Holmes. I thank all of the council representatives um, that are present and all other, uh, individuals that are present. Just want to thank you, uh, from, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Democratic Club.
And Hattie, I want to thank you for coming out and to thank you for all the work that you do uh, in keeping the dream alive. And, uh, you guys are, are just worked tirelessly and I just want to let you know how much we as a city council appreciate what you do for the residents here in the city of Carson. Uh, comments from my colleagues? Councilman? Councilman, dear?
Yes, uh, Hattie, uh, also want to thank you, uh, we're club members together and officers in the club. So uh, you do do a great job and, uh, I think it was really appropriate for you to be receiving this on behalf of all of the people in, um, not just Carson, but Carson and beyond because you're in Long Beach. And, um, uh, but our club is based in Carson and we encourage people to participate because, uh, you know, the vision Dr. Martin Luther King Junior had for America is, is, uh, something that can be a reality. It's not there yet, but we keep moving and making strides in that direction. Uh, based on, on his vision and his, his leadership, his legacy lives with us and I agree, we should celebrate uh, his great work, um, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And, uh, so why, uh, in, so in Carson, we, we also want to let every people know, all people know, regardless of your political persuasion, that the idea of democracy and liberty and nonviolent change is universal. Uh, thank you, Hattie.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Hilton.
Uh, just wanted to thank Hattie for hopping on tonight. You guys play an intricate role, uh, as the club here in Carson and thanks for keeping the dream alive. And certainly, uh, we look forward to, uh, the work that you guys are doing and have done in our community.
Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Hattie Herring. Congratulations and thank you for your hard work. I did have the pleasure of meeting you on the phone and we spoke. So, um, nice to speak with you again and again, congratulations and thank you. Uh, keep working hard for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again, Hattie, for taking the time out to come and receive this, uh, proclamation. Thank you so much and let the members know that we appreciate them very much. And also about the event on the seventeenth, it'll be a virtual, um, tribute to Dr. Martin Luther King.
Okay, did you, um, specify, um, Mayor Lula Holmes where that was going to occur?
Uh, it's going to be a virtual and it will be, uh, Dave Roberts, you can contact him and get all the information or Robert Lennox, but it's going to be virtual. There'll be a link that you can, uh, log on to and, and you'll see the virtual, uh, recognition. We can't do it live this year. We had planned on having a live, uh, event, but with the upsurge in this coro- coro- coronavirus, we, we just thought it was better to do a virtual.
I, I think I agree with you. I think, uh, you should feel a little pride. Uh, I heard the stats on the, um, uh, the vac- vaccinations that you had in your city. And so that certainly should allow you to feel some pride there. Once I get the info- information, I will go ahead and, uh, and make sure that gets out to all of the club members.
Okay, okay, thank you. And we can email you a flyer also, David, uh, Rock, can't we, Mr.? Okay, you'll email your flyer, uh, Hattie, with all the information you can get it out to, uh, your residents, but it will be going out, uh, and made available on our social media and we should have some flyers because as I always say, not everybody's has web and, or computer literate. So thank you again.
I thank you too, uh, all of you. And I just want to say, uh, one other thing, unity. We need that unity, okay?
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, the next, uh, item, we're going to skip to item number eight, will be a proclamation reconna- no, no. Yes, it is proclamation recognizing January as Human Rights Education Month, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you. And, uh, on behalf of, uh, Madam Mayor and the city council, I am honored, uh, to recognize the month of January as Human Rights Education Month. So I'll, I'll read it verbatim. Uh, whereas on the twenty-fifth of June, nineteen ninety-three, representatives of one hundred and seventy-one states adopted by consensus the Vienna Declaration and Program of Action of the World Conference on Human Rights. Thus presenting to the international community a common plan for the strengthening of human rights work around the world. And whereas the World Conference and Human Rights and Vienna Declaration and Program of Action stated that human rights education, training and public information were essential for the promotion and achievement of stable and harmonious relations among communities and for fostering mutual understanding, tolerance and peace. And whereas the conference recommended that states should strive to eradicate illiteracy and should direct education towards the full development of the human personality, the strengthening of respect for human rights and fundamental freedoms. And whereas the conference also called on all states and institutions to include human rights, humanitarian law, democracy and the rule of law as subjects in the curriculum of all learning institutions in formal and non-formal settings. And whereas pursuant to the suggestion of the World Conference, the United Nations General Assembly and its resolution four nine slash one eight four, the twenty-third of December, nineteen ninety-four, proclaimed the ten-year period beginning on the first of January, nineteen ninety-five, the United Nations Decade for Human Rights Education and welcomed the Plan of Action for the decade contained in the report of the Secretary General. And whereas the Vienna Declaration also made concrete recommendations for strengthening and harmonizing the monetary capacity of the United Nations system. And whereas the Vienna Declaration also called for the establishment of a High Commissioner of for Human Rights by the General Assembly, which subsequently created the post on the twentieth of December, nineteen ninety-three. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of Carson, California do hereby declare the month of January, twenty twenty-two as Human Rights Education Month and call upon the citizens of Carson to observe the month of January with appropriate ceremonies, programs and activities. This is fourth day of January, twenty twenty-two. So I am, uh, honored to recognize, uh, two organizations who I believe are significant and necessary in today's society. Uh, my first recipient is the Imperial Court of Los Angeles and Hollywood. I C L A H was founded in nineteen seventy as an organization intended to provide fellowship, unification, social gathering, growth and development in the LGBTQ community. Today, this organization has raised thousands of dollars to support local charities and continues to fight for human rights and equality. With us today to accept the proclamation and be recognized is the Chair of the City of Los Angeles Human Services Commission. She has worked, uh, with the LAPD and the Sheriff's Department, guiding and helping implement the policies and standards on how law enforcement interacts with the transgender community. She's a member of the LAPD Community Police Advisory Board and the Sheriff's Department LGBTQ Advisory Council. So please welcome, she should be here, uh, Karina Samala. Can you see her?
Can you see me?
Yes, there we go. Yes, thank you.
Uh, I don't think you, yeah, there it is. Thank you so very much. Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor Lulu Davis Holmes and all council members. Good evening and thank you for having me here tonight. Okay, I am also very much indebted to the city for having also support our community. I'm an act, have been captaining for the equality and human rights of should be afforded to all transgender adults for over twenty-five years. And the president of the Board of Directors of the Imperial Court of Los Angeles and Hollywood, one of the oldest organizations. It started nineteen seventy. We are part of the International Court System, which we have seventy-two chapters all throughout the United States, seventeen in Canada and also Mexico. So, and we are, uh, like, uh, uh, um, an organization that is just working with community as, 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 uh, helping just the community. We do midnight stroll and also giving, feeding the homeless every month and also helping the community. I am also the current Chair of this Transgender Advisory Board that we just stated, which started in two thou- twenty sixteen. It was founding chair also of the West Hollywood Transgender Advisory Council, which is inception in two thousand and nine. Both boards give recommendations to the mayor and the city councils on matters relating to the transgender community such as employment, housing, healthcare, education, equal rights and hate crimes ve- prevention and domestic partner rights. We also do, uh, also educate and also give trainings to the sheriff department and also to LAPD on their interaction with the transgender community. Both, both of those, uh, the, the, the policies that both are using right now is through a leadership that we have done, uh, through the city on on educating them and dealing with our transgender community. And with that, I would like to thank And with that, I would like to thank each and everyone and also reaching out to the city of Carson. And thank you for having us here. And anything that I can do or we can do as a community, we're here to help.
Thank you. Thank you, Karina. Thank you for all the work that you do. Um, also here with us is, uh, someone that, uh, I heard sing, and I was impressed by her beauty, her talent, her grace, and her bravery. So, uh, Kevin, do you have that? Um, so here we go.
And Adam followed Kelly's lead when he added a powerful pop singer to his team.
What's your name? Where are you from?
My name is Angel Bonilla. I was born Carlos back in the Philippines. As early as five years old, I already knew that I am a girl trapped in a boy's body. Growing up in a very conservative family, it was very difficult for my father. When my dad saw me as a girl for the first time, he was puzzled. He is not sure if I am his son, but he embraced me. I promised him that I will do great things. I wanted my father to be proud of me, and I'm doing this to honor him.
Welcome to Madam.
Thank you so much. So, welcome, uh, Angel Bonilla. Are you there? Hello, Angel. There you go.
Can you hear me? Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. Um, I'm in quarantine right now. Um, but anyways, um, my name is, um, Angel Bonilla. I am, um, I'm a singer, I'm an advocate, and I'm a speaker. And, um, uh, after I become the first trans woman, um, contestant on NBC's The Voice, um, I know that I can use, uh, my voice to change people's, uh, mind and heart to, for the sake of uh, equal opportunity and equality. And I will continue, um, to, uh, be the voice for peace and love, uh, for people, no matter who they are and no matter who they love. Again, thank you so much for having me. Um, thank you, um, for the City Council of Torrance.
Carson. Carson.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, hold that award.
I'm so sorry. I'm medicated because, um, I have COVID right now. Um, uh, thank you, Carson, City of Carson, for having me. And also, um, thank you, um, Mayor, um, Lulu Holmes, Lula Holmes, for having me tonight. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So I do have, uh, one more and, um, recipient for the Human Rights Education, uh, proclamation. And, uh, this is a, um, an orga- organization I am familiar with, and it is fitting since the month of January is also Human Trafficking Awareness Month. So it ties them together. So I would like to, uh, recognize CAST, uh, the Coalition Against Slavery and Trafficking. It's a nonprofit organization based in LA that is working to put an end to modern slavery and human trafficking. With us today is the CEO and Executive Director of CAST. Uh, CAST received the Presidential Award for the extraordinary efforts to combat trafficking by then-President Barack Obama. Our guest today has twenty-five years' experience leading, uh, anti-trafficking initiatives in the US and abroad. She is a founding member of End Violence Against Women. She is on the Steering Committee, member of the Victims of Crime Act at the State of California Governor's Office. She also started the first California Sexual Assault Response Team, which we know as SART, which is, uh, an organization I have personally worked with throughout my years in law enforcement. She's, uh, she has a wealth of nonprofit management organizations, coalition building, and private and public partnerships. And honestly, I, I would like to earn some of her wealth of knowledge, uh, because knowledge is power. So I am excited and honored to introduce a visionary leader, a builder, a celebrated human rights activist, the CEO of CAST, Ms. Kay Buck. And I believe she is here in writing.
Yes, here, I'm here. Thank you so much, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Mayor, and all of the City Council members. Uh, on behalf of CAST, we are so honored to receive this proclamation, and uh, we do serve the entire, uh, county of Los Angeles. I'll tell you a little bit about CAST, um, and you know, I'll start by saying our mission is to end human trafficking through education, through advocacy, and through services empowering, uh, survivors of human trafficking. And so we are one of the largest service providers in the whole country. Um, Los Angeles County, as great as it is, is a hotspot for human trafficking. It's one of the, um, one of the places where the National Hotline gets the most calls from LA County. And so we are very busy. Um, in this pandemic, we have seen a hundred and eighty percent increase in urgent human trafficking cases, and we serve the city of Carson, uh, and all of the South Bay. Um, so we have had cases in the city of Carson as well as the adjacent cities as well. Um, and I will say that, you know, we really rely on our community partnerships, um, partnering with cities, city government, partnering with other NGOs or non-governmental organizations, uh, with law enforcement and with health, um, healthcare providers. One of the things that we've done, uh, at CAST is started the very first task force in the whole country that brings together this multidisciplinary approach to address human trafficking. And so we work with our law enforcement partners like LAPD and, and others, as well as, uh, hospital, um, hospitals and, and health programs from clinics all the way to dignity health hospitals. And the reason is because this is a human rights issue. And by working together as a community, we will put an end to human trafficking in our lifetime. So on behalf of the more than two thousand survivors that we served this year alone, uh, we really thank you for this recognition and for this partnership so that we can, you know, address this in a unified way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. I think, uh, Kevin, do you have that, um, hotline, the, the, uh, the flyer that has the phone number on there? If you could put that up on the screen?
Yeah, yeah, I think this is a twenty-four hour hotline, yeah. So, yeah, this is important to post anywhere in your community. If you would like some posters, please reach out to us. And, uh, right now, it's actually legislated to be posted in businesses or industries where trafficking is prevalent. Uh, it's a state law that, that CAST helped to pass. And so, uh, we're looking for more community partners to get this up so more survivors will have access to ha- the help that they need in housing or legal services, counseling, job skills, all of the above. We provide direct care, comprehensive services.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And this is what it looks like. We will get it to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Really so much.
True. So that's for I C L A H, and then also for CAST. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, okay. Our next will be an update, uh, on the Dominguez Channel incident. Mr. Dave Roberts, our Acting City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe we have, uh, a representative from LA County, Ms. Miriam, uh, Adami. She's going to provide a brief summary and overview of, uh, where we are currently in that process through the county. So, Ms. Miriam?
Where is she?
I see her there. I don't know. She's on mute, perhaps, Miriam?
Mute.
There she is. There she is.
Hi, Miriam.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. And you?
I'm great. Happy New Year.
Same to you. Thank you. Thank you. Let me start my video. Um, I clicked on it. Okay, can I say because host has stopped the duck? All right, I'm here. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable City Council members. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on the Dominguez Channel order incident. Air monitoring levels connect, collected by South Coast AQMD for hydrogen sulfide continue to measure at or near pre-incident levels. Dissolved oxygen concentrations have been between four to seven milligram per liter throughout the entire estuary, indicating that we are in aerobic condition. Bacteria in the channel are consuming hydrogen instead of sulfur, and they're no longer producing hydrogen sulfide gas. Regarding the assistance program, the deadline for residents to submit their rece- their receipts and other documentation for reimbursement closed on December thirty-first. Thank you to this council for extending the original deadline by more than two weeks to provide program participants with additional time to compile and make their submissions. The county had a total of thirty-four thousand seven hundred fifty-five individual requests approved through its reimbursement and assistance program. That includes those who were placed in hotels by either the city or county, residents who temporarily relocated on their own, and those who either received or purchased portable air purifiers or filters. When those requests were submitted, each requester received a link to the county's online reimbursement tracking system where they can follow the reimbursement process. Again, we want to thank the City Council for its support and leadership during the incident. In terms of recovery and healing of the watershed, it's a collaborative process that will involve agencies at the federal, state, and local level, as well as a robust and equitable community engagement process. Next step is to cover the area with sediment amendment, basically putting a temporary cap over the organic material within the channel. The county knows that communication is a fundamental to a successful partnership. We intend to maintain open, open channels of communications. As a reminder, uh, residents and staff can report road, sewer, and related infr- infrastructure issues to our twenty-four-seven hotline at one-eight-hundred-six-seven-five-help or one-eight-hundred-six-seven-five-four-three-five-seven. It will be my privilege to provide the City Council with regular updates going forward. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I think you're on mute, Madam Mayor.
I've got some questions for, uh, Ms. Adami.
Councilman, dear.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you, Miriam, for being here and, uh, giving that, uh, that statement, that explanation. Uh, we in Carson are, uh, are very attentive to this, uh, this incident, as it's called. I call it a disaster, but, uh, uh, we, uh, are looking forward to, um, making the channel healthy as you are so that, uh, it's, uh, healthy for, for wildlife, healthy for the humans that live around the channel, and that this incident never happen again. So I have some questions. First of all, what has been the effect both as far as the biology and the engineering structure and so forth of the sentiment on the bottom of the, of the channel by the heavy rainfall that we had in the last few weeks? So that the, was the channel flushed out to some degree, or is the, the, um, the channel not, uh, not steep enough to cause, uh, you know, uh, a heavy, um, eroding type flow? Uh, can you answer that question?
Um, thank you for the question. Um, what I have to do is, uh, contact our appropriate staff who've been working on the cleanup and, um, biological impact, impact of, uh, this incident, and get back to the council. We'll do that.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to get that information. I'm sure my colleagues would like it because our residents, uh, would like to know. Well, the next question is, um, um, what do you know about plans to uh, bring the, the channel up to a higher standard of environmental health?
Uh, we had, uh, Councilmember, we had one meeting with, uh, um, Public Works Director, Eliza Jane. And, um, our team and her have exchanged a lot of, um, ideas, and, uh, we're working together. We're looking into having another meeting in, in the, in, in January, and hopefully come in to give, uh, some presentation, um, in the next couple of months, I would say. Um, but we just put the request through that team, uh, Public Works Team to, um, have the second meeting with the director and discuss the options and what, what will be the best step to move forward.
Okay, that's a very good, uh, start, uh, to the, to the process. Uh, I'm glad to hear that. Um, we as council members and elected officials, we have to have the political will to do it, and we have to, uh, get the political will of the County Board of Supervisors and other, uh, entities, uh, to make that happen as well. And then, of course, the funding has to be there because it would cost a lot of money to bring this channel up to the standards that we would like it to be, where actually uh, marine life, uh, waterfowl, other birds, uh, can, um, actually have a healthy environment. And of course, you know, the oxygen level of the, of the, of the water has to be high enough to support fish and, and so forth. So, um, having said that, um, there are a number of grants, uh, usually federal grants, sometimes state grants. And, uh, I'd like, you know, our council members who, to work with the Board of Supervisors and therefore our staff and your staff to work together to do some grant writing and, and get that funding available so that we can make a very healthy, attractive a waterway, uh, that is now known as the Dominguez Channel. Uh, it is a natural waterway from before it was, you know, lined with concrete. Um, and I think that the future, uh, of the channel can be really good if we all work together. So I'm really looking forward to our, our city working with your county government and all the other entities to make that happen. So if you could pass that word up the line, we would appreciate that.
We, I will, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, question, uh, uh, City Manager Dave to Eliza Jane. You're, uh, you're muted, Eliza. Eliza Jane?
Oh, yes, hi.
Okay, you are our, been able to sit at the table with the, uh, Public Works Department. That was something that we requested.
Correct.
Okay, uh, and we would like, uh, maybe not at this meeting, but an update from you. And also, I'd like to make sure that our, the Director of LA County, uh, Public Works comes back and, because we've been talking about how we're gonna remediate and make this channel, um, a nice waterway. And, and I know we were told it would take, it's a two-year process. So I, I appreciate the staff coming out, but we have some direct questions, Miriam, that we'd like to ask, and I, and I'll thank you for coming out. But I think it's important that once we start marching down this path, that we have someone that can answer my colleagues' questions and, um, and let us know on a step-by-step basis. So, Eliza Jane, when you attend these meetings, uh, please, uh, prepare a report for us on what has been discussed, so we'll know, uh, what has been discussed. I don't know if it's confidential, uh, maybe.
No, nothing's confidential. Absolutely, I can do that.
Okay. Is there anything you could share with us this evening? Okay. Is there anything you could share with us this evening?
So, so the meeting that Marion was mentioning, uh, was, I believe, in their planning department?
Mm-hmm.
And so we started conversations about, uh, what they were thinking for the affected area immediately, uh, which was about a mile or so. But we, we had the conversation about how we needed to think a little bit bigger. And so, um, they had indicated they had done a little bit of some, um, investigation reporting. And so that's part of what I've asked them to put together for so we can have an idea of what already has been done and then where we can go in the future. So, um, I think there was about, what, Marion, maybe, uh, eight or so, um, Public Works staff members that participated in that meeting? And as she mentioned, we'll have more discussions. So I look forward to, to reporting back.
Yeah, uh, Madam Mayor, I have a question for, uh, our Public Works Director, Eliza. Um, Elijah Jane, um, what would be good is if you, you and with the county working together could come up with a dollar figure, uh, an estimate, of course. I mean, you don't know how much it's gonna cost. Or how much money we would have to raise to achieve this, uh, ultimate goal of a healthy, attractive waterway?
Right.
Uh, a, a dollar figure, like a target amount?
Mm-hmm.
So then we can reach out with, uh, uh, foundations, environmental groups, uh, uh, federal and state funding, uh, grant, uh, sources to, to reach, reach that goal. Because obviously we can't afford it just ourselves as a city, but in conjunction with the county and grant, uh, funding, we could afford.
Right. I agree.
Thank you.
Comments from anyone else?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, that's my request, uh, Eliza Jane, is that you bring us back and you meet with them, something that we'll know what, uh, you guys have discussed in the meetings, things that you could share with us. So
Of course.
It's good, knowledge is power.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. And Marion, thank you for coming out and, uh, spending you, the evening with us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, the next item we're gonna go to, all communications from matters listed on the agenda from members of the public. Uh, Madam City Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
So currently, um, not at this time. I'm double checking with Kevin to make sure, but um, there are none in the queue, Madam Mayor.
Okay, none in the queue? Okay, thank you. Uh, that's for items listed on the agenda. Okay, approval of the, I beg your pardon?
I was just saying, that's correct, for items.
Next item, nine, approval of the April thirteen, twenty twenty-one, City Council's special meeting.
I'm gonna commotion a little bit.
A minute. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consent items ten through twenty-eight. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent count items ten to through twen- ten.
Don't move. Second.
Okay, does anyone wanna pull an item? Well, then no one's seeing none, uh, call for a vote?
Aye. Oh, sorry, he said call for a vote.
Yeah, aye.
Okay, aye.
Madam City Clerk, uh, report the vote, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Boca Tierra Rojas?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
He is excused. He had to leave. He wasn't still on.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a note of that. Mayor Pro Tim Hilton?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, I skipped Councilmember Dear.
Yes.
Thank you. And I got you, MP T Hilton, and Madam Mayor, Lulu Davidson?
Yes.
Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, uh, item number twenty-nine, COVID-nineteen update. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as, uh, I'm speaking of Kevin, wouldn't mind placing up the COVID update, um, PowerPoint. I'll go through the presentation very briefly, uh, yet very important, obviously, in these, uh, these troubling times. And so, um, Kevin, if you wouldn't mind popping that up if you get a chance there.
Working on it.
Okay, thanks. Okay, this evening for January fourth, twenty twenty-two, uh, COVID-nineteenth update, uh, next slide. It's, as we know, everybody's under, uh, 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 understands the surge that has continued to happen, uh, throughout the country, but specifically here in Carson. Um, obviously, we know Omicron is the variant responsible for the latest surge. Uh, this is an important fact. Uh, we've found that more than twenty percent of people that have been tested have shown a positive for this particular, uh, variant. That's roughly one out of every five individuals in Los Angeles County. Uh, with that being said, it, it gives us a, uh, an understanding that with about three hundred and twenty or three hundred, uh, full-time employees, as an example, if we all tested last week, which I, uh, from what I understand we did, that there's a very strong possibility that twenty percent are gonna come back and we'll get those results showing twenty percent positive, which is approximately sixty employees, sixty full-time employees. So twenty percent is a large number of, uh, potential positives. Uh, the transmission rate is now greater than at any point since the early months of this pandemic. Uh, every infected individual in LA County, on average, is transmitting the virus to two other people. So in other words, if one person is positive, the, the, uh, the, um, infection rate is to two other people. So one positive person actually is transmission, transmitting to two other individuals. Um, which is also the highest transmission rate since the inception of the pandemic. Uh, California, uh, Department of Public Health and LA Department of Public Health updated their guidelines for the, uh, exiting isolation following a positive test to five days after the individual's symptoms are resolved, a no fever, and they ta- test negative, which is different than from previous. Uh, there's also recommendations of using higher-grade masks, uh, so such as the N-ninety-fives or KN-ninety-fives or KF-ninety-fours. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, specifically, we have heard about some of the CDC, uh, recommended guidelines and the quarantine exposure recommendations. Um, we'll see that, um, anyone who tests positive for COVID-nineteen and is sim- asymptomatic, they're advising and recommending, uh, the isolation of five days, and we've heard about that. But we also, uh, heard earlier from Chief Bennett from LA County Fire that that's not, even though that's the CDC's recommendation, that's not the recommendation of uh, local county and health officials. They're still recommending the seven to ten-day quarantine, uh, process to ensure that everyone is being safe and that there isn't the, the transmission of that one, two, one positive to every two individuals they come in contact with. Um, we've also understood and found that, uh, after exposure of the unvaccinated, those who have received their latest mRNA uh, dose over six months ago or two months, uh, since their J and J dose should quarantine for five days, again, following the five days of the strict mask use. Uh, everyone should be tested five days after exposure regardless of vaccination status, and that's important. Um, a lot of people are thinking that they only need to get tested when they maybe see symptoms, but we're recommending, um, the five-day, uh, every five days testing. And that's until we can get to a, uh, get to a better handle of this. Um, in spes- in, in, in particular, we have employees obviously coming back from vacation and holiday, but LA County Department of Public Health, um, has issued travel advisories and states that all travelers should get tested one to three days prior to travel and should test three to five days upon returning, uh, to California. Unvaccinated travelers should also quarantine for seven days. Um, and this is, uh, going to continue also, uh, until LA County Department decides to lift this particular travel advisory. And so they have not given a date and time when they plan on lifting that. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, and that, so that, that ends the, that ends the slide presentation. Um, I do wanna make mention, uh, Madam Mayor and Council, that we are testing tomorrow. We also, also will be providing vaccinations, um, and boosters for those that need it. And so please take advantage of that. We're gonna be doing that on a weekly basis as opposed to the bi-weekly previously. And so that is gonna be available for all of our employees as well as, uh, residents. We're gonna be adjusting some timeframes and providing some additional opportunities for our residents as well. And Madam Mayor and Council, that concludes, uh, our COVID-nineteenth update for this evening.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Hilton?
Um, Madam Mayor, uh, I wanna know if we can increase testing here in our community. If you've been to any, um, community, uh, around or even Kaiser, they have a four-to-five-hour backup for people waiting in their cars to test. I'm wondering if we, uh, I have a number of, uh, testing, um, labs reaching out, trying to figure out how they can partner with Carson. I know that goes through the disaster council. Uh, maybe we can seek additional, uh, testing mechanisms here in the city, uh, as the surge is on. Uh, I do wanna highlight to, uh, our residents, uh, who are, uh, if you will, uh, chasing after the rapid tests. Uh, the rapid tests, uh, aren't always, um, accurate. Uh, and, uh, they have a seventy percent, um, rate of, uh, of, of being true or being false positive. Uh, so I would love to see if we can, uh, actually partner with someone who can get some PCR testing. Uh, the county of Los Angeles, uh, if you are unable to leave your home, they're sending you at-home tests. Uh, I would like that on our website, uh, so that we can request on-home te- uh, uh, in-home tests, uh, for those people who can't come. Instead of being gouged, uh, in certain areas, uh, they're raising the price of these, uh, these tests. So I was wondering if there was something that we can do, and I know that goes through the disaster council possibly on Thursday, uh, if we can see if we can partner with, uh, some more organizations that will bring more testing to our community. Uh, that way we'll be better equipped to handle, uh, this surge. And in light of that also, uh, our, um, our employees are being, uh, exposed. Um, I, I know the city of LA just went, uh, back to, uh, teleconferencing for all of their council meetings. Uh, uh, they no longer will meet in the, uh, chambers or meet in public or have access to the public because of the surge. I know that Carson may wanna consider doing that. I know that we just came back, uh, but we didn't know the variant was gonna po- uh, pop up and maybe consider our, uh, employees telecommuting, uh, because if the numbers are what they say, uh, we will have some positive cases coming. Uh, so just something to think about, and since we were on the COVID thing, I wanted to mention it to it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, I have been contacted. There's gonna be an item for discussion. A company that wants to come in with the nurses and the doctors that will administer five thousand, uh, tests for us. Uh, like I explained to them, it's about manpower now, so I will be meeting, that will be an item for discussion, uh, on Thursday, uh, COVID-nineteen. So I already have been in contact with someone that's willing to come to the city. Uh, then also, we are discussing, um, you know, the teleconference for our meetings to, but we've been following LA County's, uh, lead on this, and so we'll, hopefully we'll have some more information by, uh, Thursday, but we will be making reports, uh, back to this council on what we're recommending, uh, as a whole, to what we're gonna do as a city and, and for our, uh, city council, you know, probably recommending that we not have, continue the Zoom conference meeting. So that's gonna be discussed, um, Thursday, right, David? There's another discussion. We'll be meeting every week.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So thank you, but I will let the, my colleagues know about the organization that wants to come in and do the, uh, rapid test. And we also discussed having, um, uh, testing on Saturday and increasing the days because we were down to one day. So now we're talking about looking at Saturday. But we'll have more information to you, uh, coming here real soon. If necessary, we'll, if it's something that we need to move on expeditiously, I will call the special meeting to keep you informed. Okay? Councilman Dear?
We do have, um, rapid testing as well as emailed, uh, lab testing, uh, at the sheriff's station. Public parking lot, uh, the line seems to be really long every day. And so it is a good idea to make greater testing available for our residents. I, I support that.
Okay. So David, we'll, we'll talk about the company that we're, um, I've been meeting with and also and then we'll see what we can do. But I know staffing, when I met, we met in the disaster council, staffing is, is a big concern because a lot of our community service staff and some of the people that have been working, um, they're, they've been testing. So that was one of the things that I told the company that, you know, how can they assist us in providing the staffing levels? Uh, Councilwoman?
Uh, yes, David, I, I know, um, I'm not sure if you mentioned this already, but uh, as far as the city employees and contact tracing. So just an example, if, if someone is, uh, positive in a section, are we, uh, letting everyone that works in that same building section or within close with that, with that employee, are we at least letting them know so that they can get tested right away to, you know, control the, the, uh, contact tracing?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. A great question. So what we have is our risk manager, uh, Rubik Delusian. Uh, w- w- once he's, once he's notified of a particular positive of one of our employees, then he goes automatically into, uh, contact tracing mode. Once he goes to the contract tracing protocols, then he notifies those specific employees that may have been in that contract tracing element to go get tested. Um, as a matter of fact, um, we just sent four out today to be tested as well as, because of the new requirement, they're, they have to quarantine for five days at minimum, uh, while they're awaiting their test. So they're most definitely being identified and notified, uh, as well as being given the proper safety, health, and protocols, uh, moving forward. And so we, we did, again, as I mentioned, have a, a large number. I just emailed all of our employees and, uh, identifying as I've continued to, to do that process, the number, not necessarily name, but the number of individuals that have been, um, ta- that have tested positive. Today, we just had, um, found, we had a total of eleven, so we just sent that out. And we'll get an additional list coming here shortly from, uh, tomorrow's testing site. But all those individuals have been identified, contract tracing was immediately implemented. And in certain cases, when there is three or more by county, um, uh, standards and, and protocol procedures, we have to then go into a, uh, that was considered, that's considered indeed a cluster, so then we have to notify the county so they can come in and do an audit. And so, um, unfortunately, we, we are in that process now. But, you know, that's just kind of the unfortunate situation that we find ourselves in because of this, uh, this, uh, unfortunate surge.
Okay, a couple more. Um, as far as the cleaning, like the facilities management, do they come in and clean the workstations where that employee was, uh, the, working around?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Thank you for that question. And that's absolutely correct. So again, uh, Rubik, at that time, then contacts, uh, as a matter of fact, uh, uh, our Department of Public Works Director, Eliza Jane, her staff, they come in and they have a contractor that comes in to, to do that cleaning on a twenty-four-hour basis. And so it's, it's kept, um, uh, i- it is sprayed down and then forced disinfected and then left unattended for twenty-four hours before an employee would return. But we know that with the quarantine of five days, it's typically stayed free and clear.
Yes. Okay, last question. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. It's me now. I feel like I'm on Jeopardy. That's okay.
Uh, the state of California, actually the government, the, I, I believe it's the SB ninety-five that allows the eighty hours for each employee to take off in the event that they are, uh, they need time off to recover from COVID. Do, do we have that? And I think there is also another eighty hours that the employees are, uh, entitled to for illnesses regarding the vaccination. I think it's two separate ones. Did we get that information?
Correct. So we actually, yes, ma'am. So we were actually operating under that. That was under a paid family leave or paid sick leave initially, and then it ran out at the end of September. Uh, however, it did get extended, SB ninety-five. And so because of that extension, we're now looking to see how we can implement that from that extension. Um, and so, yes, that, that's definitely something we'll have to look at. And it also affects those, as you had mentioned, not just those that have tested positive, that if they get a vaccination and then coming down with symptoms after their vaccination or booster, they're provided some assistance, um, through that SB ninety-five, uh, Senate bill, so.
Yes, and we're letting all Yes, and we're letting all the employees aware that they are entitled to this to this uh this time off that is given to us by the uh the government.
So we'll be notifying that. I'm gonna be bringing this actually information to the disaster council, so the mayor is prepared and and is aware as well, but our staff is basically advising um any employees from this particular week that there is a possibility. We haven't told them specifically, but because of the Senate bill, we wanna make sure that's implemented properly.
Yes, perfect. That's it. That's all I've got. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Well, those were the things we discussed in the disaster council. We were waiting to get some information because at first we were told there was no additional funding. And so Dave, thanks you for looking at that, and then I we we'll be discussing the number of days. I think it went down to five.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll be bringing that back to the to the body.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions, I'm going to move to item number thirty-one. City Council Workshop: Introduction of a Citywide Comprehensive User Fee Study Methodology. Purp- purpose of the study and review of the fee recommendations. Uh Dave Roberts.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. So yes, this evening we have uh before us RCS, uh Mr. Eric Johnson, as well as uh Mr. Chu. And I think I saw uh Ty, he's there, uh and they're gonna provide a brief uh but comprehensive uh update uh because they were able to pivot for us. We appreciate their their existence, but this is in re- reference to the uh again, it's a workshop introduction. Um they're gonna be brief yet specific to certain things, and then we're gonna bring this back uh at the request, if you're okay, Madam Mayor, for a more comprehensive workshop that you all can really delve into with questions. So with that being said, I'll allow uh Eric and Chu, please take over.
Hey, thank you, Dave. Um good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Eric Johnson, and my partner, Chu Ty, is also here. We're glad to be with you here tonight to present the results of the comprehensive user fee study. And so I'm gonna share my screen here and pull up the PowerPoint. Everyone able to see that okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can see it.
All right, before we get into, I just wanna give a brief overview of of RCS, Revenue and Cost Specialist. Um we really pioneered the concept of matching fees with uh the cost of services, the revenues for the cost of services back in nineteen eighty. Um over the last forty-one years, we've worked with over two hundred fifty agencies in five states. I myself have been doing this for thirty-one years. I've worked in over a hundred different agencies and mostly in California. And and Chu has been uh budget manager and finance director for many years, um twenty-six years of governmental experience, and he's been with us for the last four years. So this was a a comprehensive study. We we looked at user fees, which are identifiable user. Um and there's, and we wanna look at the cost of service, so development and construction fees, finance, utility services, recreation fees all fall under user fees. We also looked at um rentals and use fees, so there's identifiable user, but the the fees are more set by the market. So facility rentals, park entry, using city property for things such as filming. And then also fines, where it's not really tied to the the cost, but you're looking to change behavior, so we're looking at parking citation and code violations as the types of fees or fines we're looking at there. We did not look at impact fees or utility rates, transit rates, grants, taxes, just the things listed above. And if we look back at the the timeline for fees in Carson and this process, nineteen eighties, Carson first uh did a fee study to adopt user fees. And it has has done numerous studies in-house over the years. Uh the last comprehensive one, I believe, was in two thousand eight. Um and then in September twenty nineteen, the city went out to RFP, conducted some interviews and selected RCS to do this process. We started in February twenty twenty, um perfect timing, right? So we we were obviously delayed by COVID and um and then picked up virtually, um finished the report this last August. Um I've had many discussions with the staff to get it to this point, and here we are today to present the the report to the city council. So this is really a thorough process, again, a comprehensive process. We want, we updated the current fees. We added, removed and redefined fees. Some fees changed um categories, some fees went away, some fees are new fees um that are that are being proposed. There are also legally defensible fees. You're not allowed to charge more than the cost reasonably borne of providing the service. So there are certain areas in here where we're showing you're charging more than the cost, and therefore the fees are being recommended to be reduced, and you're gonna have to reduce those fees to stay legal. Um we made sure that as far as the revenue collection confirmed that, and then there's many fees in here that especially recreation fees, they're more market based. And so we looked at, we're we're with the staff to look at the market there. So what have we done? We've recast the city budget with a business orientation. We did this because voters told us to. In nineteen seventy-eight, they passed Proposition thirteen, which, as we all know, limited property taxes. Then a year later, they passed Proposition four, which said that fees that do not exceed the cost reasonably borne of providing the service are not considered taxes. They wanted government to act more like a business and know its cost. But while governmental accounting does a great job of tracking revenues and expenses at the fund, department and division level, it was never really designed to track revenues and costs at a service level. So we had to create that information. Working with staff, we identify what a cost provide the full business cost of services to your customers. So there's no city council service, there's no city manager service. These costs amongst others are part of the overhead support cost. It's just like when you go to the store, you buy a can of corn. You know, when you buy that, that the cost of that can includes the farmer and the canners and the distributors and the truck drivers, and of course, the checkers at the grocery store. You know that. Well, we've done that same thing here with the city services. We have identified the full business cost providing services to your customers. Because as a business, you won't stay in business very long if you don't know this information. Additionally, you won't stay in business very long if you're not able to match up revenues with those costs. So we've done this also. For every potential fee service or fee service, we have identified the revenue and matched that up with the cost of providing that service. So how did we do it? This was a a more than a year-long process, and it involved identifying what are the services being provided and how much time and who's spending time on them. So we had many, many meetings with staff in at all the various different departments to come up with that information, to de- develop that information, because it doesn't exist. There isn't record somewhere that identifies for a typical conditional use permit, how much time is being spent. And so we had to generate that information, and in many cases, we broke out the steps involved in providing the service to make sure we're accurately cap- capturing that information. Then we looked at a hundred percent of the cost of the of of the time of every position. We allocated out a hundred percent of the time of every position to make sure that that the information we're coming up with is fitting in with the hours that people have available to them. We then looked at the city's budget. We looked at people's actual salaries and benefits and developed a fully allocated hourly rate, so that includes salaries, benefits, operating expenses, but also overhead. So we we did a very detailed cost allocation plan, which allocated out the cost of city administration. So city council, city manager, HR, finance, facility maintenance, fleet maintenance are all in this cost allocation plan, and are they are part of the overhead costs that are being allocated out to positions that are providing services to the public. So there's department overhead, there's division overhead, as well as the city overhead. So we come up with this final, this final fully allocated hourly rate, billing rate for every position. We matched that up with the time, and now we know what a cost provides services for all the for all these services that you do provide. We then looked at what are community versus personal choice services, and I'll talk about that more in a second. And for those personal choice services, we looked at what is the cost recovery for that and what would the fee be to, in most cases, get to one hundred percent cost recovery? The reasons we did the study is that the main reason is the last time this was performed was in two thousand eight. An updated analysis was needed to have good information to be able to make these decisions. We want to wanted to align the fees with the cost providing the service, because again, you can't charge more than the cost of providing the service. And through the cost allocation plan, we've determined how much you can charge, the general fund can charge other funds for the amount of support the general fund's providing to various enterprise funds in the city. As I mentioned earlier, the voters told us to do this. There's many voter enacted propositions over the years that have de- detailed on how cities should calculate their fees. The original Proposition four defines fees as being limited to the full cost provided in the service. Rents and fines are exempted from this, and you can charge the market rate for those. Proposition two eighteen in nineteen ninety-six placed limits on the cre- on the creation and and updates of property-related fees related to assessment districts or things of that nature. And then Proposition six in two thousand ten really codified a lot of the the existing practices that have been happening over the previous thirty years as Article thirteen C of the State Constitution. And it also made clear that a fee must be for a service that directly benefits the fee payer. It can't be that it's helping to support some other programs, so we're gonna charge this person over here. And so as I mentioned, we looked at all the services being provided by the city, and most of what the city provides, of course, are supported with taxes. What we call community-supported services. It typically benefits the community as a whole. By the very nature, they can't be char- uh you can't charge a fee for it, and taxes are really the only place that you can get funding for these services, things such as street maintenance and tree maintenance and code enforcement, those types of things. Whereas personal choice service, the customer's identifiable, the service is measurable. Most importantly, it benefits an individual or a group and not the broader community. You can still subsidize these fees based on social, what, safety, welfare, whatever reasons you would like as a council. And development services, recreation services are the types of things where you see these personal choice or fee services. And then within fee services, you really, from a practical standpoint, you can really break it out between regulatory fees, those those fees that people have to pay if they're going to do certain things like develop their property. So so planning, building, safety, engineering fees are more regulatory in nature and usually determined by the full cost of the service. Whereas voluntary fees, the the customer can decide not to use the service. Recreation fees are a great example of that. They can decide not to take part in that program because it it's too expensive, so these fees are often subsidized. So another way to look at this community-supported versus personal choice service is is what's on the screen here. I'm kind of a picture guy, so this is kind of how I look at it. The taxes and grants circle is designed to support community-supported services. The fee circle is designed to support personal choice services. And you know, this is obviously very simplified, but in California local government, there's really these two broad circles, taxes and grants, and then fees on the other side. But to the extent that the the fees don't cover the cost of those personal choice services, the only other place the funding comes from is taxes to make up that difference. And so we identified over nineteen million dollars in subsidies to personal choice services from taxes. And I'll get into that number more in a second here, because that's a very big number. But the question is, the I mean, these costs are occurring. The question now is who's gonna pay for these services? The person receiving the service or the taxpayer? Those are your only options. And if the taxpayer is gonna pay for it, then there's less money for community-supported services that only taxes can pay for, like infrastructure and parks and streets and public safety. So that really is the decision here is who's gonna pay for the services that you're providing, the taxpayer or the person receiving the service? Now, that nineteen million dollars, big number, right? If we break down and look at where that nineteen million dollar subsidy number comes from, you can see on the chart here that the almost all of it comes from the leisure and cultural area, recreation and community services, as we would expect. Those are highly subsidized services. They're gonna continue to be highly subsidized services. Notice we're not recommending any new revenue there. Um there may be some discussions as to changes that may happen there, but that's something that really needs to come from the council as to what as a council you wanna subsidize and what you want the user to pay for. The other big uh number there is transportation. In the transit area, there's um subsidies there for the for the different um transportation programs, especially dial-a-ride, that will most likely continue. And then there's some big numbers there, seven hundred fifty-four thousand in subsidies in the administrative area, which is mostly business license processing. And in that that case, you see the the seven hundred thirteen thousand dollars to the right, we're recommending that those costs be recovered. So out of that nineteen point three million dollars in subsidies, we think with the recommendations that are in this report that the city can generate an additional nine hundred and three thousand dollars, nine hundred four thousand dollars per year if the recommendations in here are adopted. When you get in, when we get into the detail, you'll notice that there's some big changes in planning. Planning fees have gone up dramatically, building fees have actually gone down dramatically, and there's other services where there's some big increases in the cost of providing the service and therefore the the uh recommended fee. Big reason for that is last time this full analysis was done was in two thousand eight. And so over the years, processes have changed, costs, of course, have changed. And also, even though the city staff has been updating this over the the last number of years, they didn't include any overhead costs. It was really just that there was a time detail in there, and it just included direct salaries and benefits and not any of the overhead cost. And also, you'll see in the planning area, nu- numerous services are changing from deposits to flat fees to make it easier for for the applicant to know how how much they're gonna pay, and also from staff to not have to track time for every little thing that they do. So our project goal was to identify the full cost for the various different services which we've done. RCS worked with city staff to make fee recommendations for every fee service. Those recommendations are RCS recommendations, but we worked with staff to make sure that if staff, if this council were to implement these recommendations, that they are workable, that there's something that um that would work at the counter or uh however the the uh fee payer would pay. But at the end of the day, it's up to you, the city council, to decide which services should be charged the full cost and which services are being subsidized with tax dollars. Because again, the costs are occurring. The question now is who's gonna pay for them, the taxpayer or the people receiving the benefit of the service? So this really is a tax subsidy decision. And as David mentioned, we're not asking for any decisions from the city council tonight. We'll, we will want to get some feedback from the council on next steps, whether that's a workshop to go into more detail or um at maybe at a public hearing to to ask questions, make changes and be able to um implement a new resolution, because whatever the council decides, it will have to be adopted at a public hearing by with a resolution. So I can I can go through the a a little detail in the report if you would like to, um or we could save that for a future meeting. Um but really, at this point, if there's any questions from the council about any of this.
Questions to my colleagues. First of all, I think it's a very thorough report, and uh you know, I like the idea of a kind of a workshop so we can go through this and and put our wishes uh into this uh proposal. Uh so that's that's going to be my recommendation, that we have a workshop, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues.
I've got a question. Um M O C, I've got a question about the fee study mythology. Um what we typically get as elected officials or constituents will say to us, well, cost too much to rent a room, cost too much to uh utilize a facility that's already staffed. Um case in point, uh they wanna use um uh a meeting room at a park and um the park is staffed, the people are paid the same amount of money, uh whether someone's using that room or not. Uh how do you handle the that question from the from the general public, from the customers? Uh when they say, well, you already have a staff person there, why are you charging us for a staff person?
Well, again, it's what that staff person is doing. You you can you can decide as a council that, yes, the taxpayer is gonna pay for that staff person or the time that they're spending on that rental, we we have the ability to charge that through this. Rentals are a little bit different in that you you're not limited to just the cost. You can charge what the market will bear because your is the use of a city asset. Um and so you, I'm sure there will be discussion through this as to for different rentals, who do we wanna charge and how much do we wanna charge them? Because breaking out to various different groups, type of user. Um but you have more flexibility with with the um with the rental. But the same point, people have made the same point when it comes to processing the planning application. They're already there doing um being paid by the taxpayer. But the question then becomes, yes, they're there being paid by the taxpayer, but they're doing the work for the benefit of of certain individuals or certain companies or certain bit um businesses. And the city has the is legally allowed to charge for that use to charge those that benefit from that service.
So when you do the analysis, do you uh factor in the employee looking at the plans, for instance, if it's planning? And you factor in their retirement, their insurance, medical insurance, all that, the entire cost?
Correct.
And now that employee is getting paid exactly the same amount every year, whether they work on that plan or not?
Correct.
So.
Yeah, they're they're being paid, in most cases, being paid a salary, and you can decide, and that's where this comes down, this tax subsidy decision. You can decide that we don't wanna charge the. You can decide that we don't want to charge the, the people, the, the applicants because we, the taxpayer is going to pay that bill. And so it just, it just really comes down to, it's kind of two different things. Who's paying and, and what they're doing? And so are we going to decide that as a council, that the applicant should pay at some or all of that share of their cost? Or is it something that there's a broader benefit to the community? And we, we're willing to subsidize that and, and have the, the taxpayer make up some of the difference? Because it's just, it's just important to remember that these are not, decisions are not made in a vacuum. You can, if you subsidize here, that means you have less money to be able to spend on programs over here.
No, I understand that, but on the other hand, it all depends on your perspective. The reason the city government exists is to serve the community. Serve the rest, residents, and the residents need service, so that's why the city. If, if the city government didn't do that, you shouldn't have a city government, you know?
Yeah, it's definitely, yeah.
So, I mean, it depends on your philosophy, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it definitely does. And, and you know, you know, it, it comes down to what? Should I pay for my neighbor's construction on his house? Should I pay for part of that as a taxpayer? And that ultimately is a decision before you as a council that should, should all the taxpayers pay, pay for things that benefit certain, certain individuals or groups? Or should, should they?
Well, for instance, if you have a, a new construction on a unimproved street, maybe there's no sidewalk and the city will charge the contractor or the property owner, whoever's doing the building, the cost of these public facilities. A sidewalk that they might say, you know, I'm really never going to use that sidewalk. I'm not going to walk past my house. But my neighbors are, my neighbors are going to benefit by mine. So, you know, there's, there's different points that could be made and a happy, a happy medium should be reached. And I know we'll go into those details in the workshop, not tonight. But I appreciate your presentation this evening and look forward to the workshop as well. Thank you.
May, may I also add that things have changed a lot since Prop thirteen? Prior to Prop thirteen, property tax helped cities grow immensely. And it was so easy for cities to, to find their revenue stream to provide the services. After Prop thirteen, cities have to diversify. They added sales tax, utility tax, hotel tax, and they also expanded out to fees and rates. Water rates, sewer rates, user fees. So this, this diversification also helps with being accountable too. And, and going back to what Eric said, when you're, you're applying for a building permit, it's for your project. And that helps out. When you're paying for your water bill, you're guaranteed to get water services. As of before that, property tax just paid for everything. And there becomes this inequity, like, and, and this battle, like, should property tax, should the taxes pay for public safety? Should it pay for recreation? Should it pay for the water services? You know, is it properly serving your constituents? So now this diversification, this more complex financing does make it more that the city's more accountable. And our focus is on the user fee part, just the fees and rates that, that we work on.
Yes, well, true, I'm sure you and Eric understand that the city of Carson is a no-low property tax city.
Yes.
And unfortunately for us, when we incorporated, we cut the deal with the county that we would not get any other property tax. And then a, a state legislation in the eighties forced the county made it mandatory to give us seven percent, and that's been eroded down to six point eight percent approximately. But thank goodness for the diversification, otherwise the city of Carson wouldn't be able to operate.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
My colleagues, my comments, Mayor Portier Milton?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say, uh, thanks, Eric and Chi, Chi?
Chu.
Chu. Thanks, Eric and Chu, for this. Uh, I, I think this, this definitely requires a workshop for us to delve into, but it was definitely thorough at the surface. And if this is surface, I know exactly how the workshop is going to be. I'm grateful and appreciative. So thanks tonight for the information.
Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you. I am looking forward to the workshop. And yes, a lot of information, but a great presentation. And I will, I'll purchase a calculator to help me. So thank you. Thank you for that presentation.
Okay, to the staff, first to my colleagues, we have this report in front of us. And before we have the workshop, I'm encouraging all of us to go through this page by page with a fine-tooth comb and, you know, I heard here what the mayor, Portier, is saying. And I also know that our UUT and our sales tax that we passed came with some promises to our residents. So it's going to be an interesting workshop. And what I'd like, Mr. Acting City Managers, for you to come up with a date that we can have this workshop. And so we could bring this back once we make our recommendations to come from the body at a workshop. And then we can have, have it on the council agenda.
We'll do that, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. So thank you to the team for coming out and making this presentation. I was here for the two thousand and eight and, yeah, we've been around the council and I. Okay. The next item on the agenda is memorial adjournments. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have the list of names that were provided to me this evening. And I will read them aloud in the order that they're printed. Michael James Burden, Lincoln Song Kyle Junior, Michellee Polito, Vicente Porcas Diaz, Willard Harold Murray, Horace Davis, Sandra Grauett, Jack Moiga, Regina Turmer, and Mary Armstrong.
Are there any additional names that my colleagues would like to add? Hearing none. Bishop, give us a little prayer here.
Yes, MOC. Father, thank you tonight for who you are and what you do. Father, I pray for these bereaved families. I pray that you would bless them and would touch them, comfort them. Pray for our world tonight. We're struggling. Some of us are struggling with COVID. Our colleague is struggling with COVID tonight. And we pray that you would bless all of them. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I also have someone named Mrs. Jones. I'm gonna get you her first name, Dr. Bradshaw. But Starkeisha Jones' mother lives right across the street from Curtis. I can't call her name right now. Her mother passed as well. And also the Miller family, a resident Maurice Miller. His children were at home with their mother and their, her estranged boyfriend murdered the mother in front of the children and then turned around and murdered himself. And they're Carson residents.
A Carson resident and one of my husband's former basketball players from Carson High School. I church member, family of faith, so it was frightening for us and a loss. She was just such a sweet young lady as all of our deceased are. But we had a personal connection with her also, as same as with Polito's sister. So, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I, I attended the funeral of Michellee Polito representing all of us elected officials in Carson. And that, of course, is council aide and city employee Isa Polito's sister, Michellee.
Uh, it was not on my calendar. I was waiting for it to go on my calendar. When was the service?
Oh, yesterday.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry about that as well. Wasn't on my calendar. I would have attended.
So to the Polito family, it wasn't on my calendar, wasn't on Mayor Portier's calendar. I know. Uh, Councilwoman, was it on your calendar?
No, no, no.
Hmm, the notice didn't get to us. Okay, but we do apologize and thank you, Councilwoman, for representing the entire city council.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. All communications for matters not listed on the agenda, Madam City Clerk, are there any all communications?
There are none at this time, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, council members request to add items to the future agendas.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I would like to request, of course, the mobile home park zoning ordinance to be at the next council meeting on the eighteenth of this month. And of course, I also want the the requirement that we have a, a super majority of the city council to add items to our own city council agenda be altered so that a majority of the council can add items to the agenda.
Okay, Arlene, Councilwoman, any items?
No items.
Okay.
Me too.
Mayor Portier Milton?
Nothing at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I would like to, I'm going to develop an ad hoc committee consistent myself and our newly elected Mayor Portier for the purpose of looking at S and Ps and our special events. So, Mayor Portier Milton?
Yes, ma'am, happily accept.
Thank you. And then all communications from council members.
Sure, if someone wants to go first, they can, but I have a few comments.
Okay.
No one? All right, all that being the case, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone in Carson. Twenty twenty-two certainly has dealt much better than previous years. And I'm sure that our community is going to have a happier, more harmonious twenty twenty-two than we had twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. So I look forward to working together with my colleagues to bring that joy, happiness and prosperity and harmony to our community. Thank you.
Councilwoman, any comments?
Yes, Happy New Year also to everyone. And I want to thank David Roberts, our city manager, for his quick action in putting this meeting on Zoom for the purpose of our safety and the community. And everyone else that had to work together in the staff to put this on Zoom, this was a great response. I did also want to mention an event that happened last week that the Jose Rizal event that got rained out. And also I want to thank, again, David Roberts and the staff, the city of Carson's staff for, for working really quick, getting that event inside and out of the rain. And everyone was safe and warm and dry.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
If I may say, Councilwoman, I, I thank you for the will, kind words. I have to thank Madam Mayor who gave me the nudge to get that inside because the rain was coming down. So Madam Mayor was instrumental in doing that and so, but it definitely was mainly the staff who really put their hands to the plow and had it, made that event wonderful for you all. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. That's all I've got. Thank you.
I would like to say just, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to say Happy New Year to everyone and to the employees. Thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. We appreciate you. I don't know if we had a morale booster by the day off, Madam Mayor, but they all loved it. And I'm, I'm just excited to see smiles and faces, excited to assist the people. So we are better together and that's our, that's our theme as we go through this, this twenty twenty-two, even though it's some unparalleled times. We still have work to do in Carson and we're going to get it done with this great team. So thank you and I'm honored. Thank you to my colleagues for appointing me Mayor Portier tonight. So I'm, I'm grateful and appreciative. Jim, I don't know if I'm going to be able to move around the city like you, Jim, but I, I definitely take it as a, a tall honor and I'm grateful. Thank you so much for being able to serve alongside your side, MOC.
Thank you. You, you're going to be on quite a few ad hoc committees. But to the employees, and I wanted to remind everyone, because everybody said, why don't you give off the next, the following Thursday also? In employees MOU, they were given, because the holiday fell, fell on a Saturday. They were given ten hours for the New Year's and the Christmas. So it's in there and they could use it anytime they want. The extra ten hours was just to say, we've been through a lot and I just wanted to show my appreciation to the employees, not only the full-time but the part-time. Because we all, over the past years that I've been here, the part-time employees were just, oh, they're part-time. But they fill in the gap, you know, when the full-time are not there, they fill in the gaps. So I thought it was very appropriate for us this year, for the first time, to say, part-time employees, you will get the same benefits as our full-time. That's ten hours that you can use. So, so when employees say, well, do I get the next eight? No, you already have, we gave you thirty hours in total. This is what it totaled to, twenty that you could use anytime and the ten hours that we were closed. Because I, I really appreciate the work that you do. I always say that's where our employees and our part-time staff and the ones that are out in the field, that's where the rubber meets the road and we need to recognize them. I want to, and I, to thank everyone that came to the toy giveaway. And we mentioned that before, it was a phenomenal success. The Carson Citizens Cultural Arch Foundation, I just gave up three, thirteen hundred toys to residents in the community. Twenty-five bikes and also two hundred and fifty turkeys that were given away at Veterans Park. So we did what we were supposed to do for, what we could do for our residents. And I just want to say thank you and say Happy New Year. Happy New Year to everyone. And to thank this council for working around the clock and David Roberts. Thank you for taking my, my four forty-five call about the rain. I woke up and I said, are you really kidding me? Because I heard he said, we're going to do this regardless, inside out. No, we're not going to put these seniors through that. You know, so I just asked and he responded because it was just very important for this event to go off the way. It should be. And I think it's time for us to look at some of these S and Ps. And because we are going to be going into the special event season. And I want to make sure it's dressed right, dressed and tight and that all four of us are doing what we're supposed to be doing. Because I know our new Councilwoman, she may not be familiar with some of the things that we have ordinarily by practice that I've done, but I think it's time to memorialize them. And so tomorrow, the next day, once we put these S and Ps together, I looked at some of them that we are all on the same page, we're marching to the same drum and that we're not out doing other things. So I've asked David and to set up a meeting with the, our newly appointed Mayor Portier and myself, so we can start marching to Georgia on some of these S and Ps that have been laying around dangling that we need to clean out. So without that, I want to say thank you to the staff for all your hard work. Robert Lennox, I know we're going to have a fabulous Juneteenth, not Juneteenth, MLK celebration. And we were one of the first cities to start doing this MLK along with the Juneteenth. So we're not going to be the only city in Southern California that will have an MLK. So thank you so much for all your hard work. And that ends it for me. And without any further conversation, yes.
I was saying goodnight. I was throwing it to the seaside. Peace and blessings.
Goodnight, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Bye.
Our MPT is joining us. Madam Clerk, would you let the records reflect that? Senator Bradford has not arrived, so I'm going to take the liberty of the chair to move up item number 32, election results. Could I have a report from staff, please? Yes.
I came a few minutes late. Did anyone remark about today being Pearl Harbor Day?
Yes, the pastor just did.
Thank you. I want to be sure that's mentioned.
Yes.
Mayor, I was going to have Michael George make the staff report, but I don't see him here. I think he's trying to help with some of the logistics. So, let me just say that the county has now certified the election and indicated that Arlene Rojas is the top scorer for District Four, and Myla Rockman has also won her election for the city clerk, and it would be an opportunity now for the city council at its first regularly-scheduled meeting after the announcement by the county to go ahead and do the certification.
That is, the recommendation is to waive further reading and adopt Resolution Number 21170, a resolution to the city council of the City of Carson, California, reciting the fact of the special municipal election held on November 2nd, the results for the contest for the members of the city council, District Number Four, and city clerk.
Second. Oh. I thought you said...
Second.
That is a motion. That is a motion, right? Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At this time, I would like to conduct the swearing-in for our councilmember-elect, Arlene Rojas. It will be done by our city clerk, Joy, and we'll meet you at the podium. Deputy, sorry dear, I'm trying to elevate you.
Senior deputy, I believe.
Yes. Do we have a photographer here? Hi there.
Are we going to use a microphone for that? Because this is pretty exciting. You ladies have to share that microphone, I think. Unless you have the cordless available. Usually, we do.
There should be a handheld microphone. Do we have a handheld microphone? Handheld microphone?
Sharon, it's usually sitting near you. It's not there, huh?
It's on his way. The handheld microphone is on his way.
You want us to go down?
This is teamwork. That's what it's all about. Yes. Please raise your right hand, say aye, state your name, and repeat after me.
Aye, Arlene Rojas. Wow. All right, boy!
Testing, one, two. Testing.
Please say aye, state your name, and repeat after me.
Aye, Arlene Rojas.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duty.
Upon which I am about to enter?
Upon which I am about to enter.
Say I do?
I do.
Congratulations.
And thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Speech.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody. That was beautiful. Thank you, Mayor Lula Davis-Homes, the only rose that'll ever shine brightly here. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Jim Dear, and Jawan, and Cedric, there you are, Cedric. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the staff and all the employees here that are present, and I look forward to working with you as a team, working together, and let's do this. So, thank you very much. Thank you. So, are we going to do photos? Is that what we're going to do? Okay. Here we go. Sure. Yes, absolutely. Come on, guys.
For without masks.
Yes. Please, come on, Sharon and staff and city clerk, who are you? Joy?
City clerk.
City treasurer? City clerk?
Oh, sorry.
You need to come up a little bit, sweetie pie.
Oh. How's that? Good? Are you in?
Alright, so, everyone looking? Everyone ready?
Looking at that camera right there.
That one will be over here.
Thank you. Thank you. Finished yours? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think he's got his first.
Congratulations. Beautiful. Thank you.
Councilwoman. Oh, excuse me. You're ready to get started. Um, Myla, she's certificate and a letter perhaps?
I'm sorry that she wasn't able to come to the swearing-in. So, you know what? Will you be here at 7:30? Yeah. Well, sorry.
I think it doesn't matter. I have to see.
Councilman Hilton doesn't have to be here.
I swear we didn't say to you. Do you speak the public? Do you have none? That's fine.
I'm going to go into closed session. If he comes, we'll come back out. Thank you. Congratulations to our new councilwoman. We're going to hold off on the swearing-in of our city clerk until Steve Bradford, our senator, arrives. We're going to go into, Madam City Attorney, closed session items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council will meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4 because the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in one case. The council will meet pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9E1 because there's a significant exposure to litigation in three cases. The council will meet pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 to confer with legal counsel regarding pending litigation in the matter of Cam Carson versus Carson Reclamation Authority, City of Carson and Successor Agency, Matter Number 20STCV16461. The council will lastly meet pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 to meet with Sharon Landers, City Manager and Faye Moles, Lead Director of Human Resources, its negotiators regarding labor negotiations with AIM, CPSA affiliated with SEIU Local 721, AFSMI 1017, AFSMI Local 809. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, are there any comments on closed session items?
None at this time, Mayor.
Okay. We're going to go into closed session when the senator arrives. Could you let us know, and then we'll come back out and swear on our city clerk. So, we're going to go into closed session at this moment. Are we ready? Are we live? Oh, good afternoon again. We're going to re-convene our open regular session, and we have our state senator here, Steve Bradford, to give us an update, a legislative update.
Madam Mayor, I just have to report out of closed session very quickly.
On that one item? Oh, okay.
The council met in closed session pursuant to, on labor negotiations. They only took up one item, item number five, and no reportable action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator? Senator Bradford?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's truly an honor to be here. As it's been a tradition since I've been state senator and a member of the California legislator, I've always tried to come back to the communities in which I serve and provide a legislative update. For those who are unaware, our legislative session goes from January to September. Our year ended on September 10th, and then the governor had 30 days to sign all legislation that was on his desk, so our official legislative cycle ended on October 10th. And I'm just here today to provide you a update of what I've accomplished since this year started. First, I wanted to say it was an opportunity to join you and deal with this issue that you guys have been dealing with for the longest, and that's that odor in your community. And so, I know you guys have been working hard on that, so I commend you in all the hard work you do. Also, I want to commend the newly-elected officials. Arlene Rojas, who has just been sworn in, so welcome to the council. It's going to be the hardest work, but the most rewarding work that we'll ever do. As I stated, I represent the 35th Senate District, and Carson's part of the district, and I'm just going to go quickly over some of the measures I passed this year. Under COVID, we were only allowed to introduce 12 bills for the last two years, only 12 bills. Of those 12, eight got to the governor's desk, and I will quickly highlight the seven that he signed because he vetoed one of them. But nonetheless, it was a good year. First, starting with SB 2, better known as the Kenneth Frost Jr. Police Decertification Act. For those of you who are familiar, Kenneth Frost Jr. was a young African-American man who was shot and killed in 2018 by the Gardena Police Department by simply running away from the police. This bill allows us to decertify police officers just as we can take the license away from a doctor, a nurse, a lawyer, even remove elected officials. We can even remove barbers, the license from barbers and cosmetologists, but up until now, you couldn't do that in the state of California. Now, California joins 46 other states that has a fair and transparent way of removing rogue officers. And why is this named after Kenneth Frost Jr.? Again, he was a young man who grew up in Gardena, and the day I heard of his killing, I immediately asked, who shot him? And when they gave me the officer's name, I was totally unfamiliar with him because all of you guys know I've grown up in Gardena for all my life. I was on the city council, and I've been on a first-name basis with most of all those officers, and definitely the last four police chiefs. And once I learned who the officer was, he had recently transferred from Orange County, where he'd been involved in three questionable shootings there. And before this bill, you could be involved in some illegal activity and nefarious acts as a police officer. You could be investigated before the investigation is completed, or even after you're fired, you can transfer to another department. This bill will now end the wash, rinse, and repeat cycle that we've all experienced here in California and across the nation. So, I think it's going to build public trust and make our communities safe for all of us, and create the relationship that we all want with our law enforcement in our community. So, I'm happy that the governor saw importance in that, that he not only signed it, he came back to Gardena, to Raleigh Park, where Kenneth Frost Jr. was shot, and signed it right there and met with the family. So, it's a good day for change here in California. Next is SB 796, better known as Bruce's Beach Bill. You guys are probably familiar with that as well. It was a piece of property that Willa and Charles Bruce, an African-American couple, purchased in 1912 for $1,200 and created a bathhouse, a lodge, and a cafe. And from the day it opened until the day the city took the property away, it was a thriving success. It afforded African-Americans who were denied beach access and recreational opportunities. Anywhere else in California was only two places in the early 1900s that African-Americans could recreate at the beach. That was there at Bruce Beach and Manhattan Beach, and well, in Santa Monica. And even though they opened and were very successful, they were constantly harassed for 12 years by the KKK and other kind of racist activities vandalizing the patrons' cars, setting the facility on fire on numerous occasions. And when that did not dissuade and deter Willa and Charles Bruce, the city took it upon themselves to use eminent domain to commit a crime and to take the property under the guise of building a park, a park that wasn't built for 40 years. And they held on to the property for 20 years fearful of a lawsuit. Then they transferred it to the State of California in 1948. The state held on it until 1995. At that point, we transferred it to the County of Los Angeles, who's now in control of the property. And what my bill does is simply remove those restrictive covenants that were placed on the property and now allow the transfer back to the Bruce family, the two living heirs, their great-grandson, Anthony Bruce, and a great-grandson as well. So, we're excited about that, and I have to commend both our supervisors, Supervisor Janice Hall, whose district was in, but also the fearless leadership of Supervisor Holly Mitchell as well to help facilitate, as well as the three other members of the County of Los Angeles who voted unanimously to return the property. So, we're in the process of the de-transfer right now. Real quick, SB 655, which is an insurance diversity bill, simply allows women-owned, minority-owned businesses, disabled veterans to contract and procure with insurance agencies and ask those insurance companies to provide an annual report of their diversity on their boards and corporate office. Also, utility workforce diversity. Again, we know we're dealing with wildfires, and we're seeing now many of the men and women who are out there doing the vegetation, hardening, and clearing are conservation corps workers and inmates. We're seeing, once those inmates are free, consider hiring them. Those corps members who come from usually urban communities, hire them as well, diversify your workforce, and make us all safer and help fight wildfires. Next is SB 26, which we call Fair Pay to Play Act 2.0. As you guys know, I came before you two years ago. I passed SB 206, which was the first in the nation to allow athletes to monetize their name, image, and likeness. Our bill wasn't set to go into effect till January 23. What we saw with the rest of the nation, 18 other states wanted to introduce, had introduced similar bills, and we saw the NCT2A was trying to get in front of what we had proposed here in the city of, I mean, in the state of California. So, we moved up our activation date. Our bill went into effect September this year, and it now also allows community college athletes to take advantage of this. And many folks say it's about men athletes, but who's benefited so far the most is women athletes because we all know it's very little professional opportunities for women in sports, and this allows them to be treated just like any other college student. If you were a music major and you were on scholarship and you wrote a song, you can monetize that. If you were a computer science major and you developed an app, you can monetize that. But if you're a scholarship athlete, you couldn't sign your autograph, you couldn't teach the sport in which you played. So, now it allows them to take advantage of it. Next, criminal administrative...
Senator?
Yes?
You got to go through all 12?
Then, I only have seven.
Oh, okay.
The governor only signed seven. And I'm on the last one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm speed reading and speed talking, so if you want me to stop now, I will right now.
You have one more. That's good.
I just have one more. Criminal administrative fees, which is SB 586, which, as you know, many times folks go to court and there are assessed fees that they can't afford, fees like court costs, failure to appear, and we're seeing this only adds to spiraling debt for individuals, so we remove those fees. And the last one, determining sentencing, so we can determine sentencing for individuals. And last, the budget, I was able to skewer $140 million for the district, $60 million for Cal State Domingo Seals right here in this community, $50 million for Charles U. University, Medical School of Medicine and Science, $10 million for Martin Luther King Hospital, $3 million for down in Wilmington for the Cheryl Green Community Center, for Boys and Girls Community Center, and another $6 million for Altis. So, I'll stop right there.
And I have a request. Now that I'm listening to all these millions, I need you to come back and see how much you've secured for Carson the next time out.
It was just $60 million for the college, which is a staple here in the community.
City of Carson.
You got to put the request in. Got to put the request in.
Yes.
I always like to comment on Steve's excellent success rate in Sacramento. Thank you for representing us so well. I want to particularly outline the Bruce Beach legislation. That was an injustice that needed government action, and you led the effort. I know other people supported it, but I want to compliment you, Steve. I've known you for decades, and this is one of the best things you've ever done. You've done a lot of great things. But Bruce's Beach issue was a terrible injustice on multiple levels, and this is a remedy that was appropriate. I wish more could be done. I'm sure you do too, but righting a wrong, even though it's years and years later, the fact that you did it is great. I compliment you. Now, you know, I'm a schoolteacher, right? So, on your legislative record, you get an A, but if you want an A+, you'll follow the mayor's advice. And you did $60 million for our community to the university directly, but I may take but out of that sentence. And we'd like you to consider some projects for next year in Carson. We would appreciate that.
It's all about the requests. We champion what has been asked of us. So, the president asked for 20 million. We found them 60.
All right. Well, that's a lesson for us to learn.
And a million for the Dymley Center as well.
Very good. I was there when that was announced, so thank you very much for that. That's my home school. Does any of our colleagues have a comment?
I'll comment. Senator, great job in Sacramento. So, you reiterated, put in the request, so city manager, you heard the mayor, make sure you put in the request. So, we appreciate the hard work. When I was first introduced to Steve Bradford, it was some years ago, and just tagging along and what people were calling him, they were saying that he wasn't an empty suit. And I never knew what that meant until I got in office. So, you're not an empty suit, and we appreciate the hard work that you do.
I appreciate that.
Councilwoman.
Yes, thank you, Senator Bradford.
Microphone has to be on, yeah. The green light should be on.
There we go. We're on. Thank you, Senator Bradford, for all your work in Sacramento as well, and I did want to comment as being someone involved in law enforcement. It's the changes that you make that is for the good of the people, and also it bridges the gap between the community and law enforcement. So, everything that you've done is an improvement, and I thank you for your efforts, and let's keep it going. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Hicks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Senator Steve Bradford, you said we got to ask, because all we got to do was ask? Be ready for a long list. I'll make sure I put some items on there that I know that we need to address. But again, you have never been an empty suit, and I've known you since combat, and so, understanding that you have been the same then as you are now, a person of integrity that will do the job and get it done, and I want to say congratulations on the job well done.
Thank you. I just said more here back then.
Yeah, you did. We had, both of us had a little after. We won't go there.
Thank you, Senator, for coming and joining us with that update. We look forward to having you, and I will request that you install our newly-elected city clerk, Myla Rockman.
I look forward to that. Highlight of my evening. Do we have the oath of office?
Oh, did I? Is that the one I gave you?
Is there a Bible here?
Oh. Oh, that was somebody's Bible. Oh. I...
We'll go get it.
You left it in the back?
I gave it to her.
Joy, do you have the readout of the, for the senator? He'll need it. Okay.
This one? Can we take the drink while we wait? Isn't that something?
Yeah. Get out the way of the professional. Let the professional work. And George Calvin too much to miss the picture.
Okay.
Reverend didn't have a Bible on him? Leave one without one. All right, you placed your right hand on the Bible, and I am honored to give the oath of office to a young lady that I've known far too many years, and you couldn't ask for a better individual, so we're going to execute the oath of office, and I need you to repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Myla Rockman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
I take these obligations freely?
I take these obligations freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and well?
And I will well and well.
And faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter?
And faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
With the powers vested in me, you are now duly sworn in as our new city clerk for the City of Carson.
Thank you.
Time for a speech.
To everyone that's here, to everyone that's watching, I want to say... And this is a remedy that was appropriate. I wish more could be done. I'm sure you do too. But righting a wrong, even though it's years and years later, the fact that you did it is great. I compliment you. Now, you know, I'm a school teacher, right? So, on your legislative record, you get an A. But if you want an A+, you'll follow the mayor's advice. And you did $60 million for our community to the university directly. But I may take but out of that sentence. And we'd like you to consider some projects for next year in Carson. We would appreciate that.
It's all about the requests. We champion what has been asked of us. So, the president asked for 20 million, we found him 60.
All right. Well, that's a lesson for us to learn.
And a million for the Dymley Center as well.
Very good. I was there when that was announced, so thank you very much for that. That's my home school. Does any of our colleagues have a comment?
I'll comment. Senator, great job in Sacramento. So, you reiterated, put in the request, so city manager, you heard the mayor. Make sure you put in the request. So, we appreciate the hard work. When I was first introduced to Steve Bradford, it was some years ago. And just tagging along and what people were calling him, they were saying that he wasn't an empty suit. And I never knew what that meant until I got in office. So, you're not an empty suit, and we appreciate the hard work that you do.
I appreciate that.
Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Senator Bradford.
Microphone has to be on, yeah. The green light should be on, yeah.
There we go. We're on. Thank you, Senator Bradford, for all your work in Sacramento as well. And I did want to comment as being someone involved in law enforcement. It's the changes that you make that is for the good of the people. And also, it bridges the gap between the community and law enforcement. So, everything that you've done is an improvement, and I thank you for your efforts. And let's keep it going. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Hicks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Senator Steve Bradford. You said we gotta ask, 'cause all we gotta do is ask? Be ready for a long list. I'll make sure I put some items on there that I know that we need to address. But again, you have never been an empty suit, and I've known you since combat. So, understanding that you have been the same then as you are now, a person of integrity that will do the job and get it done, and I want to say congratulations on the job well done.
Thank you. I just said more here back then.
Yeah, you did. We had, both of us had a little effort. We won't go there.
Thank you, Senator, for coming and joining us with that update. We look forward to having you. And I will request that you install our newly elected city clerk, Myla Rockman.
I look forward to that. Highlight of my evening. Do we have the oath of office?
Oh, did I? Is that the one I gave you? Oh. Oh, that was somebody's Bible? Oh. I gave it to her.
Joy? Do you have the readout of the, for the Senator? He'll need it.
Okay. Get out the way, the professional. Let the professional work. You and George Cowshere too much to miss the picture. Reverend didn't have a Bible on him? Leave one without one. All right. You placed your right hand on the Bible, and I am honored to give the oath of office to a young lady that I've known far too many years, and you couldn't ask for a better individual. So, we're gonna execute the oath of office, and I need you to repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Myla Rockman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California?
I take these obligations freely?
I take these obligations freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And I will well and well?
And I will well and well?
And faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter?
And faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter?
With the powers infested in me, you are now duly sworn in as our new city clerk for the city of Carson.
To everyone that's here, to everyone that's watching, I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. It's about the journey, the lessons learned on the journey, the blessings received on the journey, and everything else that is to come in the future. So, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you to the Senator. Thank you to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, newly senate council member. I appreciate you all, appreciate your support, and I look forward to seeing Carson flourish. Thank you.
And on behalf of a grateful city, I want to welcome you to the city of Carson.
Cut the cake.
Councilwoman will have her cake presented at the party. We don't want you to think we've forgotten about you.
Where's your party?
Let's turn it around so we can see the?
That is yours, it's official. That's yours as well, it's official. Thank you. There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can somebody call 911? Is he okay? Is he fine or he just failed?
Sunny? After closed session? Okay. After closed session.
To, are we on the air still?
I don't know. Doesn't say on?
It doesn't say on the air.
Live on air right there. Thumbs are up.
7:15. David, are we on the air?
Yeah, we are.
Oh, okay. We're live?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna recess to closed session. We should be back in what, 30 minutes? Okay. Because we have an event scheduled at 7:15, okay? Thank you.
7:30?
Yeah, but we need to be walking that way by 7:15.
It takes a few minutes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We're going into closed?